Welcome everyone, the July 7th, 2025 Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board welcomes everyone present and the Wichita Public Schools will be the premier district of choice and inspire each student and staff member to thrive and become future-ready within the greater community. This is a business meeting of the Board of Education and we are pleased that you have taken time to join us. For the roll call, all Board members are present and please join me in a moment of silence. Our color guard tonight is from the Heights High School JROTC. Please stand for the presentation of the colors, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Present, colors? Ma'am, request permission to post the colors.
You may post the colors.
Thank you ma'am. Order, colors? Post. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, colors? Post.
Latona, first item?
Good news, celebrating student success, Heights High School state champions in wheelchair races.
Okay. Welcome Chris.
How are you guys doing?
Doing well.
Well again, thank you guys for letting me speak tonight. So, one of the things we want to talk about is not only Isabel, this is Isabel Einwich, did I say it right? Einwick, sorry. Einwick. I want to talk about her personal accomplishments, but I also want to put a spotlight on Heights' wheelchair track program, which meets many of our accomplishments in our strategic goal number three. So it is my honor to be here today to recognize an exceptional student and highlight the continued success of Wichita Heights wheelchair track program. Today with me, I have Isabel Einwich, Einwick, I'm gonna mess that up a couple more times, I promise you. I apologize. Coach McMillan and athletic director, Nig. I am proud to present our state champion Isabel Einwick. Third time's a charm. At least accomplished something today. Who delivered an outstanding performance at this year's state track meet. Isabel secured a first place in the 400 meters with a time of one minute, or what, sorry, time of one minute 22.89 seconds and in the 1600 meters with a time of five minutes 37.03 seconds. She also earned a second place finish in the 100 meters. These obviously are achievements, are testaments to her dedication and athleticism. But furthermore, further than that, Wichita Heights has built a tradition of excellence in this area and we've actually had athletes having previously won state titles. We have a, we have a boy that has won the 100 meters and 400 meters he's graduated, just so you guys know, but I want to kind of give you this history. His name is Grant Pierce. He, he won the 100 meter and the 400 meter events three different times. And I have found out that he also holds records in both the 400 meter and the 1600 meter events and those are national records. That's correct, that's right, okay. So tonight, I am proud to celebrate Elizabeth's remarkable accomplishments.
Isabel.
Isabel, sorry.
I'm reading and looking up, I apologize.
Isabel's accomplishments and recognize the broader success and positive influence of Heights wheelchair track program. And I want to thank you all for your continued support for our student athletes and inclusive athletic programs.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for remembering, so thank you for what you do. Thank you for staying strong and competing at such a high level. So great way to represent yourself and the district, thank you very much. Okay, Latona, next item?
Rotary Club, Reading is Fundamental partnership.
Good evening. How are you guys this evening? Good. I'm Amanda Scharschel, Executive Director of Elementary CNI and I'm here with a special guest tonight, David Hawkins, a 10-year Rotary Club member and RIF reader at multiple schools as well as site coordinator. This good news item is really to highlight the partnership that we have between Reading is Fundamental, the Rotary Club, and our Title I schools that have that program and how they're helping us towards strategic plan, goal number one, with every child becoming a reader. So I'm gonna get out of the way quickly, but I do want to highlight the program, what it's about, and a couple factoids for you. The mission embraced by Reading is Fundamental is to motivate children to have a lifelong, I know you guys can't see the screen, so I'll read it to you, have a lifelong, life-changing love of reading. The volunteers provide inspiration and impact and appreciation for literacy when they visit classrooms aspiring to ignite a hunger for knowledge and a passion for learning. So actually Rotary Club's program, RIF, started in 1988 and it had one school and one Head Start program. We are currently serving 20 Title I schools in Wichita Public Schools, all elementary. They distribute 17,000 books a year, this was last year's number, to over 8,600 students in our district. There are 150 volunteers who are in our schools, reading to students, and they're funded solely by Rotary Club member contributions. So that's a little bit about the partnership. I'm gonna let David step in and talk about its impact and then I'll wrap us up with some things for our librarians.
Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry Isabel's not here anymore, but way to go Isabel. I'm a proud graduate of Southeast High School, so it's really fun to be back in this building, although I don't recall what this room was for back in the day. My name is David Hawkins. I am a retired insurance agent and currently an adjunct professor at Wichita State University in the Barton School of Business. I'm here today as just one of 350 members of our Wichita downtown Rotary Club. I'm currently co-chair of our literacy committee. As Amanda said, over 150 different volunteers have distributed both dictionaries to third graders and conducted two readings a year for all students at 20 Title I schools for many years. We visit each classroom and tell the students a little bit about Rotary Club, why we personally like to read and what reading can do for them in school, in work, or in their life in general. We then get to read a book that, to the class that the librarian or the classroom teacher has picked out. Oftentimes I bring my own books, just because I enjoy certain ones. After we read, then comes the fun part. We get to call out each student's name and a lot of them aren't as easy as Isabel. So we call their name out and then we get to hand out a book to them that they have personally picked out at a book fair a few weeks earlier. And most Rotarians say that this half hour, hour of reading to our students is the best part of their week and it always is the best part of my week. And, and I've read in six to eight different schools here, none of which I attended, which is, is unfortunate, but that's okay. Personally, I love reading because my mother was an avid reader and was an elementary school librarian just a couple blocks away at Caldwell for many years. Reading was just something we did in the Hawkins household. Our love of reading helped my brother, sister, and me to succeed in school and in our chosen professions. As leaders in the community, the Wichita Rotary Club wants to encourage reading and instill a love of reading to specifically in those children who may not own books in their own homes. We have enjoyed partnering with USD 259 and the many talented principals, librarians, and classroom teachers. What's next for Rotary Club and literacy in USD 259? Well, we're looking at ways to supplement these book reads. Some ideas are more frequent visits to the classrooms, not just twice a year, and reading with individual students one-on-one, just like United Way Read to Succeed does, which I've participated in many years. We're already working with individuals at the Wichita Public School Foundation and project teacher to get access to other funds and resources. We thank you for the opportunity to help in a small way to educate the children of our community, but thank you to each of you on the board and superintendent for all that you do for our children and for our schools. Thank you.
David?
Sorry, I just want to take a minute also to share with you the buildings that this program is currently serving. We are also wanting to send a huge shout out to our librarians. They are often the RIF coordinators at their sites. They order the books, they set them out, they schedule, they bag them, they talk to the RIF coordinators and the readers. They are a central part of the success of this program. And we sent a survey out last year to our librarians to say, how is this impacting your building? And I chose three buildings, they're very short, I'd like to start with Adams. So Adams Elementary's librarian, who was a first year librarian in our district, I believe, says the joy and excitement the students have when they choose their own books is definitely a benefit of the RIF program. The students can't wait to take home their book and look forward to their RIF day. Cynthia Franklin, Cynthia Franklin Elementary said at Franklin, "We call the books given by the Rotary Club our forever books. When students first hear this, their eyes light up, excited to have something they can call their own. Often this is the only way they have to build a home library of books that they can read over and over with their trusted adults at home." And White, "The RIF program has proven to be incredibly effective in fostering a love for reading, not just through book distribution, but by creating a supportive community around literacy. The program helps build a foundation of lifelong readers by introducing children to books that resonate with them, ultimately increasing their engagement and improving their reading skills. This connection between children and reading often extends beyond the program as families and communities continue to support reading outside of the school environment," which is our ultimate goal, every child a reader. So thank you for allowing us to come and highlight this program this evening.
Thank you for highlighting it and David, we thank you. Please pass on our condolences and gratitude, not condolences, but our gratitude for what you guys do, day in and day out, in supporting reading. I love the program title of Reading is Fundamental because it truly is and thank you for helping us reach out to each and every child to make sure that they can read and giving them books. So thank you guys very much, we appreciate you.
District level recognition and accomplishments.
Rachel, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Bell and I am the Chief Communication Officer for the district. And tonight I have the privilege of highlighting five WPS employees. And in a school district our size, as you know probably better than I do, the needs are great and the work never ends. And we are fortunate to have educators and non-educators who are dedicated to serving our students. Sometimes that looks like self-improvement and so that's what we're gonna talk about tonight. First, I want to introduce Dr. Steve Noble, who is the district's Chief Operations Officer. He starts this week, so trial by fire here. And we will, we will make a formal announcement about his hiring tomorrow. Dr. Noble is a former superintendent and has worked adjacent to education through private industry for the past couple of years. So welcome, Dr. Noble. Next, I want to introduce Alicia Allen, Marketing Coordinator, and Latona Hoyt, Clerk of the Board. Both have been selected to participate in the Wichita Business Journal's Emerging Leaders Program. This program develops new leaders in our community. Congratulations to both of you on your selection. Recently, Director of Operations Fabian Armanderas, who couldn't be with us this evening, completed BOLD, which is Business Operations Leadership Development through the Kansas Association of School Boards. This program focuses on enhancing skills and knowledge around facilities planning, technology planning, security, financial strategies, procurement, and human resource management. KASB staff and industry experts led the trainings which were held in school districts across the state. And finally, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary, Dr. Lauren Hatfield, participated in the director, the district administrator, leadership academy offered through USA Kansas. This program is a comprehensive, professional learning experience that empowers central office educational leaders with skills and strategies for driving systemic improvements in their districts. Participation in the academy also involved a leadership coaching component which is intended to help leaders navigate challenges and refine their leadership styles. So again, welcome to Dr. Noble and congratulations to Alicia, Latona, Fabian, and Dr. Hatfield.
Latona, next item?
United Teachers of Wichita.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you're not gonna hear the mic.
Okay. Good evening, President Albert, Vice President McCray Miller, Superintendent Beilefeld, and distinguished members of the board. I'd like to begin tonight with some exciting news. UTW has once again been awarded a $10,000 Reading Opens the World grant from AFT, which will help us get more books into the hands of Wichita students. We're currently working in collaboration with Deputy Superintendent Alvarez to develop a thoughtful distribution plan that includes volunteer involvement and community support. This effort builds on a recent project we're especially proud of that we shared about in May. UTW funded a brand new book for every incoming kindergartner in the district for the 25-26 school year. Now we're excited to reach even more students with books they can truly connect with. We know that when students have, or when children have access to books at home, they're more likely to read, but we also know that not every family can afford to build a home library. So we are committed to making sure that students receive grade level, high interest books so they can fall in love with reading, build their skills, and ultimately reach grade level proficiency. This is the kind of work that happens when we come together on what's best for kids and we're grateful for our continued partnership and look forward to putting more books into students' hands. Now I would like to turn to something more serious, our continued concern over the Financial Oversight Committee. For months, we have asked, where are the educators on this committee? When you left educators off the committee, you left out an essential voice, the people who are in the buildings every day educating our students. I recently heard that the committee may recommend a pause on a potential bond issue and I'm here to say clearly, our students and educators should not have to wait for adults to sort out their issues before we do what's right for their learning environment. At a recent board meeting, multiple educators stood at the podium and shared firsthand concerns, classrooms that are too hot in the summer and too cold in the winter, sewage issues, gyms without air conditioning, and even serious electrical problems. Our students deserve the same opportunities as students in the suburbs, including access to safe, modern, and climate-controlled classrooms, gyms, and facilities. I recently spoke with Superintendent Beilefeld and I appreciate that commitment he, he shared with me about bringing staff into this conversation moving forward. However, I am asking tonight that the board pause any recommendations from many committees until the committee has had a chance to hear directly from the educators who work in these buildings every single day and who are affected by the outcomes of those decisions. Their voices and expertise must be part of this process. We must invest in our students, we should not let any adult issues stall improvements that our buildings desperately need. Finally, I want to briefly address the devastating news we received about funding last week. With less than 24 hours notice, the federal government pulled back $45 million from Kansas Public Schools. Let me remind you that 90% of Kansas students attend public schools. The funding cuts will impact budgets across the state, especially our school district. Once again, educators are expected to do more with less. That means fewer resources, fewer supports, and more strain on a system that's already stretched thin. Our kids always pay the price when public education is cut. This is bad news for our schools, our communities, and our future. Our students deserve much better than this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Katie. Latona, next item?
Service Employees International Union.
Seeing no representative from SEIU, next item?
Public Communications, Dr. Gretchen Ike.
Okay. So thank you for joining us tonight and if you have signed up for public comment, you will have three minutes to speak and we kindly ask that you acknowledge your allotted time according, normally we have a timer displayed, tonight I will give you a hand signal when your time is up. But we encourage you to share your thoughts openly and honestly, but we ask that your remarks remain focused on school-related matters and are respectful and constructive. The board will listen to your input but will not respond during this meeting. However, we are listening and may follow up as appropriate. And just as a reminder per the Board of Education policy that no attacks by the public comment speakers are, should be geared towards personal integrity, character, or competency of any employee, student, or board member of USD 259. Speakers shall maintain an appropriate level of decorum, courtesy, and professionalism in their comments to the board. And with that, we welcome our first speaker.
Not present.
Dr. Gretchen is not present this evening. Okay, second speaker?
Dave Clark.
Is Dave Clark present? I do not see Dave here tonight. Next speaker?
Matt Malgett.
Welcome Matt.
I feel like I won something by getting to come up here, this is great. All right, good evening, President Albert, Superintendent Beilefeld, and members of the board. My name is Matt Malgett. I'm a current administrator in our district, a parent of Wichita Public School students and a proud member of this community. I want to begin by thanking each of you for the time, energy, and leadership you put into the last bond vote. The items that were identified were very well thought out and very much needed. Even though we didn't get the voting outcome we hoped for, then we must push through and try again. With the community's clear understanding and support behind us, we can get a better outcome. I've been with the district for over 20 years and in that time, I've worked in buildings that have seen better days, some built long before modern learning needs were even imagined. I've also had the opportunity to work in our newer facilities and I can tell you, the difference is real. In our newer schools, classrooms are the right size, there's space for students to move, collaborate, and focus. The lighting is better, the air is cleaner, the technology is reliable. These things may seem small, but they add up to a learning environment where both students and staff can thrive. This bond gives us the opportunity to bring those same benefits to more schools across the district. It's about safety, accessibility, and creating spaces that reflect the high standards that we hold for our kids and our educators. That's why I'm here tonight to voice my full support for moving forward with the bond as soon as possible. I strongly encourage the board to take action. Our students and staff are counting on us and this is our moment to deliver. Thank you.
Thank you Matt. Latona, next speaker?
Connie Reddick.
Should have rethought the heels, but it's okay. Good evening, Board of Education members, district leadership, and other stakeholders invested in the work to make USD 259 the premier district of choice. I am a parent and a principal in this district. Though moving to Southeast, I've been blessed to serve as principal at Curtis for nearly four years with incredible staff and resilient students who I represent today to impress upon you a sense of urgency to pursue a bond now. Please strongly consider, to the point of affirming, a decision to seek another bond before our current bond expires next year. The enhancement of safety and belonging at Curtis through a controlled entrance years ago has given me the courage to come before you today. Science lessons in classrooms without sinks and water indicate facilities that do not mirror the quality education that our staff provide. You may believe we have time before pursuing a bond because perhaps you're unaware that my PE classes learn outside during August due to heat advisory in the gym. My family engagement nights in the gym during October still occur in, with doors propped open for airflow. Even with air conditioning, if we had it, our competition gym fits less than 30% of our school population. You may believe we have time because perhaps you're unaware that I looked into a wheelchair ramp in our auditorium so that it would be ADA compliant, but adding a ramp with eliminate seats in an already cramped space. Programs that celebrate student achievement, heritage, and extracurricular engagement cannot be held with the expectation of 900-plus participants. For family involvement, Curtis presently takes field trips to AMAC, adjusting the bell schedule which reduces optimal learning time. Towards strategic goal one, academic achievement, schools use terms, a year's growth for a year's time. However, when students come to middle school struggling to read for various reasons, our amazing teachers teach them how to read while also teaching them the content of 612 standards. They teach them this while also closing gaps of that. I reference this so that our board does the hard work of this and that at the same time. Though not a resident during our bond previous years, I know that trust is low concerning bonds, but I urge you to establish and rebuild trust while pursuing adequate and updated facilities for our students. The crisis of facilities in our schools forces us to employ simultaneous strategies. Our community will believe us when we show them our current reality and offer a transparent and inclusive plan for how we'll fix it. Thank you again for your faith in me as a leader. I'll offer you my faith in your leadership to truly do what is best for students and our community.
Thank you Connie. Latona, next speaker?
Greg Tice.
Thank you for letting me be here today. Hello, my name is Greg Tice. I'm the managing partner at SPT Architecture. I also served as 12 years as a school board member in the Renrick School District. So during that 12 years, I was board president, six years, and three years was on the KESB Executive Board. So I want to start by saying thank you all for serving on the USD 259 School Board. I understand firsthand what that takes. I'm here today to express support and observations on the future bond issue you are considering. My firm has helped school districts throughout Kansas pass bond issues and we have passed 14 out of 15 bond issues on the first attempt. Although I do not live in the 259 School District, we do own our office building and pay taxes in the school district boundary. My experience as a school board member, as a taxpayer in your district, and architect for K12 schools in Kansas gives me a unique perspective to offer. I felt compelled to come speak to you because I have heard that there have not been enough business leaders voicing their support for the next bond effort. It may be quiet currently because it's not on everyone's minds, but do not forget that you have a lot of support in the community. All the surveys and information that were gathered before you decided to move forward last year were very positive. I have spoken to several leaders in the community and that support still exists. I want to tell you that you're on the right path with the bond plan. There are two reasons that we see bond votes fail. The first is that school districts try to do too much. We've often seen school districts try to pass 20 mil plus bond votes that ask really too much of the taxpayer. That typically gets angered, that typically angers the community and there are a lot of no votes. The second reason we see bond votes fail is a lack of communication and information in the community. Voters want to know what they're voting for. When this doesn't happen, this leads to voter apathy. Apathy will kill a bond vote and that is most likely what happened to your bond vote in February. It was not that you had a bad plan, it was simply that it was not clearly communicated. You definitely were not asking too much. The average bond and interest mills for schools in Kansas is around 12 mil. The average bond and interest mills for schools in Kansas is around 12 mills. Most schools in this area have between 12 and 20 mills. Your bond mills of 7.5 mills is certainly a reasonable ask. I looked at the taxes that we pay for our office building. In 2024, we paid $264 a month, which is about $15.52 per $100,000. A homeowner that has a $100,000 house pays $7.14 a month. Neither of those amounts seem unreasonable to help USD 259 students thrive and become future-ready for our community. Finally, when should you have an ex-bond election? This November is definitely too soon. You would find yourself repeating the problems of the last bond election. We have found that springtime and March is especially the best time to have a bond election. Studies have shown March is the best time for a bond election. Also, this allows you enough time to educate and build the bond campaign and also inform the voters along the way. You could do November 26th, but we typically stay away from November elections. There can be a lot of other issues that come into play in November elections, and they can become partisan, and we especially don't like it when you have school board members running for bonds. Of the 14 bond votes we have passed, only one has been a November vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Greg. Latona, next speaker?
Charlene Marvin.
Welcome, Charlene.
Before I start, I would like to know that what I'm going to basically express to you this evening is not only my feelings but also others within the Native community. So, I don't want anyone to take offense or anything, but there's a lot of questions that we don't have answers to. Okay? And I probably wouldn't be here, but I've been trying to call someone since May 30th within the district and never have received a return phone call. Okay, the Native program-- oh, and also I wanted to ask you, is it okay if I mention a name?
No.
No? Okay, so if I stop, it's because I've got a name, okay? Okay, the Native program has changed throughout the years, but when the last director came on board, he turned the program into something so much better than the previous. He put his heart and soul into the program and the students. He's given the students so much more opportunities, education on their heritage, always there for them, having workshops, et cetera, and being proud of who they are. In fact, I don't feel like in this main situation that maybe the students were hurt first because they had an event that following week, and they had to cancel it because their director could not come with them, and they were quite hurt by that. The community was told that the past ones were let go due to budgets, and their question was, why the natives? There are a lot of other ways that, you know, might be considered, such as-- and again, no offense to anyone, but a question. We have a chief assistant superintendent. We have several other superintendents. Why do we need so many? Why do we need more than one principal or multiple assistant principals in a high school or any school? Or multiple adults in a non-self-contained classroom? We have multiple coordinators, et cetera. Now, after talking to the state Native American education program at the state level, he was shared with me that, at the last count, there was 1,400 Native students in this particular district, and the program is actually funded. Also, that in some districts, which we would also fall under, was that the funding, the grant, the funding, or some other-- there's no other means, the program staff is paid through that. And also, some of the districts choose to pay half--
You've got 10 seconds.
Pardon?
You've got 10 seconds.
Oh, okay. Anyway, I have to question then as to why the cuts were due. It sounds to the community kind of more public. It might want to reevaluate. Also, that within the community Native program, this did not happen. Did you know that you have eighth graders that have not been taught their states and capitals? Or eighth graders that ask a question?
Charlene, thank you.
And the teacher's response was, go look it up on Google.
Thank you for being here tonight.
I'm sorry, we don't always have our full freedom of speech.
Charlene, you had your-- we have three minutes for each public comment speaker, so, thank you. Latona, next speaker, please.
Michelle Cunningham.
Good evening, members of the board and everyone here tonight. My name is Michelle Cunningham. I'm a therapist here locally. I'm also a parent of one student in Wichita Public Schools and one future student. USD 259 buildings and their facilities are in need of repair and updating, and now with federal cuts on the way to important programs, new questions are emerging about how USD 259 will be able to support the nearly 47,000 students equally. With 9,640 students who receive ESOL services and 8,289 students who receive special education services in WPS, roughly a third of families are anxiously awaiting answers about how their children will receive an education that serves their needs. Last February, the bond vote failed to pass by 319 votes, which is about 1% of the 28,000 voters who participated. I think that narrow margin shows our path forward for funding public schooling in Wichita is within reach and is cause for hope rather than despair in the face of such mounting challenges. The district must look at new ways to engage the community to rebuild trust and create a plan that is long-term, sustainable, and that addresses the needs of our students and our teachers. In 2008, when the previous bond issue passed, things were slightly different. The vote was in November during the general election, for one, but there was also a great deal of community engagement and the issue-- on the issue prior to its consideration. Afterward, however, some of the public was disappointed with the amount of accountability and follow-through. There were reports that the lack of completed projects due to funding cuts at the state and federal levels created distrust in the community. Collectively, many in Wichita were not happy with the uncertainty of its implementation, and respecting that fact is an important element of the path forward. 2008 teaches us that listening matters, and with more budgetary constraints on the way, there is an urgent need for the community to come together to support public education. This includes the board and district talking with community members about what is important to them and presenting a research and data-driven plan with those goals in mind. In order to get funding support, the community, including teachers, must be on board and involved. Teachers are a great resource for determining the current needs of both the students and the buildings. They are essential partners in creating a sustainable plan and should be included every step of the way. As a parent of a child in Wichita Public Schools, I want the best for my kid and the other students at our school. Maintain buildings with working HVAC, for instance. Create a learning environment which can focus on the whole student emotionally, physically, and academically. Teachers and school staff will be better able to focus on students when they don't have to focus on what is or isn't working in their buildings. In order for our public schools to continue to operate successfully, I urge the board to really listen and take to heart what the community is telling them-- many people here tonight are telling them-- and be honest with the community about the urgent needs of the district. It's dire. There must be unity in the decision-making and the presentation of these real issues, and I ask the community to listen and hear the need that our schools have for providing the best for our students. Thank you.
Latona, next speaker?
Eugene Cameron.
I don't see Eugene present. Next speaker?
Chantel Nez Dominguez. Ya'te, she'e Chantel Nez Dominguez wul'ya. She'e zit la ni nishlo' ant kua'twani bashachin. Sanja kina da shanale't, a'ashe da'sache. She'e kua'taw ea sanegi e'ngyn shle. Good evening, everyone. My name is Chantel Nez Dominguez. I am from the Denet Nation, also known as the Navajo Nation, located in Arizona. Tonight, I'm here because, as you all know, I believe I sent you all an email regarding our youth camp coming up this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. I am a parent. I'm an advocate. I've worked in the public health system programs for over 20 years. I've worked in community engagement. My son will be entering in the first grade this year. So, I am very active as far as his education goes. My mother was a teacher for 35 years, and so, education has always been very important in our family. So, back in April, when the Native American Parent Advisory Committee were told that there was going to be no summer program for our students, there was a lot of disappointment in the community and also within the parents in that group as well. And so, as a parent and as someone who typically doesn't take no for an answer, I took it upon myself to plan this event literally on a $0 budget, and I've been so blessed to have gotten the support not only from the district but also from community members, different health insurance companies who are actually paying for two of the lunches, and then also Nike N7, which is a native-owned Nike ambassador who is also is willing to help in funding this program and this event as well. I think I just wanted to come to invite you in person. I think it's different when you do it face-to-face, so just wanted to invite you in person. I think it's really important, especially now for our Native communities, to see our leaders in that room with us, and I think it would make a big difference for us in really just drawing in more support, more dedication, and to making sure that this program thrives in the future. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chantel, and we appreciate the invitation. Latona, next speaker?
Trish Heilman.
Hello, Superintendent Beilefeld, President Albert, and members of the BOE. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. As many of you know, I've never been shy about sharing feedback, and I do so because I care deeply about our public schools and our community. Today, I want to say a sincere thank you for establishing the Financial Oversight Committee. This kind of community involvement is crucial. I'm honored to serve on the committee and truly energized by the thoughtful conversations and innovative ideas already taking shape. I know many of my fellow members feel the same. With nearly 200 applicants, it's clear there's strong community interest in supporting our schools' financial health and transparency. You've set up this committee with some very important guardrails, like ensuring only community members have a vote, not paid staff. This isn't a knock on staff. It simply helps ensure open, unguarded feedback. It creates a space for honesty and new perspectives. That said, I want to offer a few suggestions that could help build even more transparency, trust, and impact. Let the community lead member selection going forward. Now that we're established, having the committee itself nominate and vote on replacements or additions would reinforce independence and build long-term credibility. Strengthen agenda collaboration. Allow the co-chairs to collect agenda topics from committee members and work with staff at least one week before meetings. This gives everyone time to prepare thoughtful, informed input. Balance the conversation. Ensure at least half of each meeting is reserved for listening to community voices, not just presentations. The goal of this committee is to hear from the public, and that requires space to speak, ask questions, and discuss openly. Finally, I'd love-- this, I actually wrote this before, y'all, so I'd love to see a staff-led version of this committee, too, with representation from all employee groups. I imagine the wisdom and perspective from classified staff, teachers, administrators, and others could be just as valuable in finding efficiencies and improving outcomes, maybe more. I genuinely believe committees like this one can help rebuild trust between our community and our schools. Thank you again for taking the risk to do something meaningful. It matters.
Thank you, Trish. Latona, next item?
English for Speakers of Other Languages Program Update and Data.
And the timing of this is good because of some of the comments that are made. Well, we'll talk about federal programs tonight because that's a hot topic and relevant to what Christina's going to be talking about tonight. I don't think this is part of her presentation, so I hope I'm not stealing any thunder, but I do think it's important because we don't start at the root a lot of times when we present. We just talk-- we just jump in. We start talking about, these are the kids we serve, and they speak a lot of languages, and here's all the great things we do. We are constitutionally required, per a Supreme Court decision in 1992, to serve every kid that comes to us, regardless of citizenship status, regardless of what language they speak. So, the idea that somehow cutting funding that's used to support these kids is going to help us achieve our goals for our student outcomes, to have every kid reading, is the opposite of what we need because we're required to teach them, right? We're required to teach them regardless of what they come to us with, and that comes with disabilities and languages and all the different kinds of kids that we get. And I think that's part of what makes our institution so great is because we do take them all, right? But it needs to be said, right? It needs to be said that this whole presentation is not some extra that we do for kids. This is part of the core of what we're trying to do to get every kid to be able to read, and it is what we're required to do at the very basic level. So, I know there's other opinions in the atmosphere about that, but the truth of the matter is, for us, we teach the kids that show up, and no matter what language that is, we teach them as best we can, and I think-- I'm biased, but I think we do a pretty darn good job of that, Christina, don't you? So, I'll pass it off to you guys to brag about yourselves and tell us about all the good stuff.
I'm really just here to be a really good sidekick to my fabulous colleague. I'm Holly Ingram. Good evening. We're glad to be here. Thank you, Superintendent, for that. We are not talking about the funding piece, so thank you for holding off those questions. Got it, yes, we'll talk about it later. We are not talking about the funding piece. I'm Holly Ingram, Assistant Superintendent of Learning Services, joined by Christina Boyer, Executive Director of ESL Programming. So, we're going to run through some data and pieces about the programming. As the superintendent said, it is really good timing. It was just really good coincidence that this was planned, so. We're going to share just some overall data with you. As a couple of the speakers referenced, we have 21% of students in Wichita Public Schools who are identified as ESOL, meaning English for Speakers of Other Languages. ELL is another acronym you will hear of. That is the Student, an English Language Learner, and the program is ESOL, English for Speakers of Other Languages. We have 116 languages spoken in students' homes. These were our statistics for the 24-25 school year. That number has been closer to 120. It fluctuates every year based off enrollment. 104 countries of birth represented in our student body, and you can see on the graphic our top 10 languages spoken in Wichita Public Schools. English, Spanish, Vietnamese are obviously our top three, but you can see the other top ones there as well. Some other demographics that I think are also pretty telling of the story happening in our district as well as across the country are enrollment trends. So, you can see for the last four school years, by month-- and I know those bars are really little-- what our enrollment has been year to year. Obviously, we would expect high enrollment numbers in July and August, but we know students don't come to Wichita just in time to enroll for school. We enroll students year-round. So, these are students specifically that are coming to enroll in our ESOL programming because English is not spoken in the home. So, you can see, especially with the bar graph on the right side, how our numbers have jumped significantly in the last two school years, and that's going to be more in what Ms. Boyer shares with you next.
Okay, just another fact. We have over 1,500 ESOL-endorsed staff in our schools, working with our kids every day. Approximately 150 certified staff complete their ESOL endorsement annually. We work with local partner schools to help us with this. Newman Wichita State, K-State, KU, any of those state-local schools that our staff sign up. We pay for their endorsement, thanks to your help. We pay for their endorsement. We pay for their textbooks. We pay for their praxis reimbursement, and they give us a minimum of two years back for Wichita Public Schools. So, we're pretty happy about that high number, and hopefully, we can continue to add to that overall number of endorsed staff. ESOL programs provide quality education for English language learners through co-teaching, embedded teaching, and push-in models. And your-- the next slide will kind of show you a little bit about each one of those models and how we've shifted our instruction so that we're more inclusive and students are staying in the classroom with their same-age peers and not pulled out. So, you have a graphic. You have co-teaching and push-in. Those are very similar models. The biggest difference between co-teaching and push-in is the planning. So, co-teaching, there's usually some joint planning collaboration that has happened between the two teachers or the teacher and the para-professional. And push-in, you know, due to timing and really trying to meet the needs of all students, push-in might be the support that happens in that particular classroom. It's still-- It's still meeting all of the needs of students. There's just not that joint planning. And then embedded teaching, those are the classrooms that the teachers are ESOL-endorsed. So if you're ESOL-endorsed, you may or may not have additional support in your classroom to support ESOL students. So those are the three models that we're really focusing on. Again, really not really trying to move away from the pull-out model, more inclusive, and making sure that our students have access to grade-level content. I'm going to talk a little bit about our newcomer programming. Really proud about our newcomer programming and where we're at. Newcomer programming supports students in 2nd through 12th grade with limited English proficiency. So these are students who are recent arrivals to the United States. And on the placement test, they are very basic level. So we are happy that we are able to provide additional supports for these students in 16 of our comprehensive schools. So we have 10 elementary schools, three middle schools, and three high schools. The whole plan is to get students into the classroom with same-age peers as much as possible and as soon as possible. So we are really focusing on addressing students' linguistic and academic development, as well as social-emotional, and helping students adjust. We can't treat all students the same. Some students come with us with prior schooling, and some have had zero schooling and are age 16. And so we really have to be flexible, and our buildings are doing an awesome job at meeting their needs. Again, our goal is to fully transition into general education classes within one to two years, if not sooner. As soon as they're ready, they're in there. In elementary, we're really trying to move towards a model where our students are in with their same-age peers, the beginning of the day for that second-step time, social-emotional, class-meeting time, lunch, recess, specials, science, social studies, as soon as possible, and for those core subjects. These are our 16 newcomer sites. We have almost 1,200 newcomers as of May 2025. So our class sizes are quite large, and we've had some support with that moving forward next year. And also this year, we added several, we added four new sites. I'm going to move to that. We added four new sites this year at elementary, and as well as paraprofessionals. So we're pretty excited about how we are able to meet those diverse needs of our English language learners. Again, here's some trend data for our newcomer enrollment from the past three years. Last year, we enrolled almost 1,000 newcomer students. And this year, almost 650. So again, quite a few number of students who have a significant need for language development. Some exciting information I want to share. Moving beyond newcomer classrooms and newcomer programming, some important data. We're 80% of our ESOL students are graduation rate in 2024. I chose to focus on that elementary growth with KELPA. KELPA is our annual language proficiency assessment that all ESOL students take every year until they're proficient in all four domains. And you can see from 2021 to 2024, '25 school year, the gains that were made in elementary. I chose to focus on elementary because we've added a lot of additional support to elementary this school year. From 2018, we had an increase of graduation rate 9.3%. Some recent enhancements to ESOL. So last year, we were able to offer ESOL programming in all elementary and K8 buildings. So that was new, starting this last year. We opened four additional newcomer sites. We adopted a newcomer curriculum for our newcomer programs, elementary, middle, and high. And we added eight elementary paraprofessionals in October due to the growth in those buildings, where we added new programs. Some exciting things for fall of 2025. All secondary buildings will offer ESOL programs. So now all buildings, K12, will have ESOL, which means students can go to their neighborhood school. They no longer have to go to another school that offers ESOL programming. We're adding 20 ESOL professionals to our K12 schools. We're adding 11 newcomer teachers and paraprofessionals. And we developed with, working with our newcomer high school teachers, administrators, curriculum specialists, learning services, secondary office. We worked to develop and upgrade our program of studies for our new, for our high school newcomers. So starting this year, they will be receiving core credits first year and not just elective credits. So we're really excited about that, to get them on a good start, nice foundation their first year in Wichita Public Schools.
So this might be the part the superintendent stole a little bit of our thunder. But why is this important to us? It's okay. It's the last slide before questions, and it's okay that it's my slide, not Ms. Boyer's. But really, as we think about the students we serve in Wichita Public Schools and all the data we showed you, our students, our staff are walking in schools reflective of the community, our country, and frankly, the world in which we all exist. So knowing we're sending students out to college, career, that is a very diverse workforce, very diverse universities, whoever that might be, our students are being exposed to that, whether they are ESOL themselves or going to interact with others who have been through an ESOL program. So it's preparing students, both through the ESOL programming, but also our other students, to interact with what the world looks like today. It's no longer, I walk in a classroom and everyone looks and talks the exact same way I do. That's not the world in which we live anymore. But I also think it reflects the uniquenesses of the different cultures and countries and all the different places that are represented in our schools. So that's really why we wanted to share this, but also the data and the background of the students and the work that our staff are doing to serve these students because it's not easy work. And that's why, as the superintendent pointed out, the money to do the work is important. So with that, that's all of the information we have. And then, any questions or anything you want to add?
Before we get started, I want to ask one quick one. Newcomer sites, how do we select which schools are newcomer sites?
Great question. So we, as we added the four new sites, we went to where students live, where it's their base school closest to where they live. So really worked with transportation. Fabian was great in helping us map that out, like, oh, why? This school might have been a neighborhood that previously had a large newcomer population, but it doesn't anymore. So we need to shift and move that. So that is their base school. So it doesn't work in every scenario, but in most it does. So it's their closest school.
Okay, Kathy?
Thank you for sharing that with us. I know it's going to make a student feel a lot more welcomed if they learn how to speak the language. How long has the district offered this program? I'm just looking for a little bit of the history of it. Do you know, Kelly? No?
Well, I've been in the district 23 years, so I know at least that long.
Okay, that works for me.
And much longer before that. I wish I knew, I don't have the answer. I can give that for you.
I think it's, I think it's really crucial to have this, and I'm really glad that the district offers it because of such the diversity that we have in our school district. And don't we all want our students to feel welcomed and safe? So I think this is good. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Stan?
I just wanted, please pass on to the newcomer staff my appreciation of their efforts. I've visited several newcomer classes in the last couple of years, and I've always impressed with the eagerness of these kids to learn. It reminds me, it reminds me of a simpler time when kids came into school like sponges. And these newcomers are just so excited to learn, and they're so excited to be here. And all the time while they're adjusting to a different culture. And our staff has been doing a wonderful job. So I just wanted you to please pass on to the staff how much the Board of Education appreciates their extra effort.
Thank you. They work extremely hard. Not only newcomer teachers, newcomer paraprofessionals, every staff member in the building helps create this environment where students feel welcome, and they're able to thrive with that. So thank you.
And just the desire to learn is off the charts. So, thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Knock?
Thank you. Can you speak more to what determines when a kid moves out of the newcomer program?
Sure. We've worked really hard with teachers and learning services in the last few years to really determine what that is. This is only going to be my third year going into this position. Before, I don't know if there was really established criteria necessarily, or we just think that they're ready. But we have put in some criteria that really helps teachers use data to help drive these decisions so that students are not held in newcomer classrooms, that they're out working on their language acquisition as soon as possible. So we've worked with teachers to establish us using a lot of the same data that our other teachers are using, as well as some oral language proficiency assessments.
And so you mentioned that typically, kids in the newcomer program stay like one to two years?
Two years.
Two years.
It's really what we're, what we're working at. When looking at analyzing some data, some previous data, that's usually where about students were exiting, two to three, maybe four years. But two years was on the average of where students were exiting. So we didn't just like decide that two years was a good time. We used some data to help us make that decision.
What are the average class sizes for newcomer classes compared to like other classes?
Well, they're extremely large, honestly. And thankfully, our elementary office, secondary office, financial office, title office have been very helpful in making a plan to help with that, those class sizes moving forward. So they are large, anywhere from 16. We have had some middle school classes up in the 40s.
Which, some of that is those enrollment trends, right? Like, you can't predict when you may get 13 new students that are coming into a newcomer program. So it's being flexible, as flexible as we can be inside school classrooms and where the programming's offered.
In our district, is there a shortage of newcomer teachers and newcomer paras, or?
Not traditionally. We've been able to fill those vacancies before other vacancies. We do have a few right now, but those were late-added positions or teachers who went to another position in our district or another district, so. Can I go back to your timing question?
Oh, yes.
I wanted to add something else. It's not two years and you have to, you have to leave newcomer. If the student is not ready, we're not going to like say you have to, you have to leave. We really want it to be a good time, good timing for them, but also using data to help drive that decision.
Yep, you addressed a concern of mine. Thank you.
Thank you, Knock. Melody?
Thank you. You know, I'll echo what everyone has already stated. I've also been able to attend some of the classroom settings, even participate in some of the programming. I'm thinking about Pando at, when they do their financial literacy over at Coleman. And that was absolutely fabulous to be able to watch because what I was able to see was something maybe similar to what I was hearing in Stan's comments. And that is, are the students that are already pretty adept in English, English speaking skills, kind of latch on and really do kind of, kind of take them up under their wing in order to help them to, I guess you could call it assimilate, but certainly to become a part of the educational community and/or a school community. And I, I really loved seeing that. It was just, it was just not amazing, but just very heartwarming to just, you know, know that they come here and typically, in our settings, they're going to be not only accepted, but they're going to be richly just come on in, you know? Let's, let's work to get, let's work together. I know that's probably not going to be everyone's experience, but it is what I was able to see. So that was, that was fantastic. Actually, Knock asked one of my questions, and that was the number of students. And so what I heard was a range of 16 to 40. And how about at the, I know the 40 was possibly middle school. How about at high school?
We don't have a class size, last year, we didn't have a class size over 28 in our newcomer classrooms.
At, at the high school level?
Yes.
So speaking of the high school and/or secondary, we have 21% of our student population, that's approximately 21%, that are ESOL. Do they all, when do they actually participate in state assessments?
Great question. So if you're a newly arrived student, newly arrived to the United States, you're exempt from taking the ELA assessment for that first year. You take all other state assessments. That next year, your year two in the United States, in Wichita Public Schools or any Kansas public school, you take the Kansas state assessment, every test.
Regardless?
Regardless, regardless.
Of your competency of the English language.
Yes, ma'am.
You're going to take it. Just another point, that we have been, as a board, as well as a, as a district, have been looking at how, how different USG 259 is in comparison to so many other urban districts, and particularly rural and suburban. Of course, districts are aware of this. But it does impact what our state assessment scores end up being. And, but we don't, that's just, doesn't seem like that's anything that is considered, you know, when, from a legislative perspective particularly. They don't seem to be able to factor that in. But we're not, 21% of our student population is not necessarily competent. In fact, it's probably, I mean, it's more than that. But I mean, 21% of our population have not become quote-unquote literate in the English language. But yet, they are, of course, still going to be assessed. So, and it does impact our scores. That's a commentary. I'll continue to make it as we move forward. The other, the other one is, so we say that, not K, but 2nd through 12. Can you share what goes on K to in 1st grade?
Sure. Our kindergarten, 1st, and 2nd grade classes are teaching those foundational literacy skills that we feel like all students would need and benefit from. Therefore, we feel like they need to be with their same-age peers, gaining language acquisition at the same time as their, as non, excuse me, as English speakers. So we want to make, we want them to be with their same-age peers, learning those foundational literacy skills. We teach in our newcomer classrooms, I'll let you add on, in our 2nd through 5th grade classes, we teach those foundational skills. So if you go to a high school newcomer classroom, year one, you're learning decoding integrity, phonemic awareness. You're learning those foundational skills, which is kind of a shift. We haven't always done that. And so we feel like our kindergarten through 2nd grade classrooms are really filling that need.
And so I think I was at, gosh, I have to remember the, Who's Right at Oliver and right off of?
Jefferson?
Jefferson, Jeffersons. So I was there. And are they pulled, are they pulled out or are they still in their own classroom setting, K1?
K1 are with their same-age peers in general ed classrooms.
In general ed class.
K12, yes. Sorry, K1.
I think those are the questions that I had. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Melody. Knock?
Sorry, I had some more questions. So can you go back to the elementary KELPA growth chart? So for clarification, is that the percent of students that, you know, met the standards? Or is that the percent of students that like improved?
Those are the students who met the standard. They were at a Level 4 on each of those domains.
Okay, thank you. And then the next question I had, so fall 2024, ESOL programming's provided in all elementary schools, all K8 schools. And then fall 2025, all secondary schools will offer ESOL programs. Correct me if I'm wrong, so previously, there were only like a select schools that, you know, had the ESOL programming. So like, when you had like the district-wide implementation, were there like any growing pains or like any unattended consequences with just like this, like rapid expansion, if you will?
Sure. Sure. Hence, the adding eight elementary paras in October. So, we all use White Elementary, for example. White Elementary previously had a lot of students on waivers. They're waiving out of their ESL services because they wanted to go to their neighborhood school. Well, you now have ESL services can be provided there. So, those students, those families reverse their waivers because we can now provide that service and support for them. So, they went from having like eight ESL students to fifty ESL students. So, we did have some growing pains. With going district-wide elementary, we let our families choose. We wanted them to stay, and most families wanted to stay at their school that they had been at. Because they'd created a community, they loved their teachers, they knew that they knew the staff. They didn't want to leave. They wanted to stay. But families have a choice. You want to, you can stay, or do you want to go to the school Kelly Elementary across the street? So, we were letting families choose, and they get to stay until they're finished with fifth grade, eighth grade, twelfth grade.
Thank you.
Thank you, Knock. Christina, you had mentioned that there was a change in the high school. Now, we do decoding. Can you explain the history of that and when those changes took place?
Well, it really happened with all of our letters training that we've had. Luckily, we've been able to have this learning that's focused in finance and the foundational literacy. And so, how are we going to, you know, have a student in tenth grade read biology text and they know very few letter names and sounds? So, the science of reading really helped us with moving forward and changing our curriculum to make sure that we're meeting the needs of those students.
So, probably in the last two to three years is when we really developed that? Okay. So, what were we doing before that? So, say we have a student who's a freshman or a sophomore that's entering high school. They're they're here in the country probably for the first time, and they do not speak English very well. What would usually happen to that student?
Well, they were in, they were in classes, they were in literacy classes. There was a curriculum, but it didn't necessarily meet that need for the phonics and phonemic awareness that we felt like our students and our, that we or our teachers felt like they we needed. So, it was a variety of things that that teachers were using to meet the needs that they felt like they needed to, they needed to meet.
So, it's just a much more structured way of instruction?
Yes.
Giving those students that that basic foundation of English?
Yes.
So, one thing in this program of study she's talking about, so what might have happened? A student might be in a literacy course for their English one credit, also a literacy intervention, and then maybe another literacy. So, they might have had like in a high school block schedule, three of their eight classes all around literacy. Where now, they might have a newcomer course and their English class, then freeing up that third block since we have a more, as you said, structured curriculum and approach to that support they need. So, then they can also be working on whatever elective credits or earning other core credits versus just being in kind of that newcomer literacy support for almost half of their school day or program of courses. So, that was really the work Christina and her team did in really looking at what credits do they need? What credits are we already issuing? And they don't need to take just all of these elective credits. We needed to make sure they were getting science, they were getting social studies, they were getting math credits early in their high school career versus waiting to year two or year three.
Okay, very good. Well, seeing no further questions from the board, thank you, ladies, for all of your hard work. And as Stan had mentioned, please pass along our gratitude to each of the staff members that you work with because we are very grateful for the hard work that you guys do day in and day out. So, thank you. Okay, Latona, next item?
Financial Oversight Committee report.
So, Addie is coming. And we're going to have two presentations that are separate but the same and connected. And it's all, it's hard to differentiate, you know, where where one stops and where the other starts. But we're going to start with Financial Oversight Committee presentation, and then she'll stay put and do the budget presentation. So, take it away.
Because I have to talk into the mic. Good evening, President Albert, Superintendent Beilefeld, esteemed members of the board. My name is Addie Lowell. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for Wichita Public Schools. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to do an official report out of our newly established Financial Oversight Committee. It's been a privilege to lead this work. We've gotten to work with some very experienced and engaged individuals to collect a lot of really candid feedback. And I'm excited to share some of those points with you this evening. When we established the Financial Oversight Committee, it was immediately following the failed bond issue in February of 2025, knowing that our funding shortages were not going away, and a plethora of opinions faced before us on all the reasons why we lost a bond, if and when we should go again, how we should approach our our funding gaps. We knew it was best to reach out to the folks who live and work and have kids in this community to to gain that feedback, which was why we established this Oversight Committee. And so, we needed to work quickly because our issues are urgent, as you guys have all heard this evening from several of our speakers. And so, we met three times, once in April, once in May, and once in June, to kind of solve the three issues on the slide. So, our committee was tasked with developing an unrestricted reserves policy. This makes sure that even in the face of urgent facilities needs, we still have safe cash reserves to ensure long-term sustainability for our operating budget. We evaluated short-term funding or one-time cash, year-end cash recommendations. We also reviewed some longer-term funding or bond issue recommendations. And so, I'm going to go over some specifics with you this evening. I've shared this particular slide with the board previously. And I'm just going to reiterate for the benefit of repetition for the board this evening, some of the pressures that we face on our capital outlay fund, which kind of feeds into that urgency that that we're, that we've been expressing with that funding gap that we have right now. So, right now, in capital, capital outlay, our consistent revenue streams were budgeted this fiscal year, well, the previous fiscal year, holy cow, it's fiscal year twenty-six already. Our consistent revenue streams were fifty-point-two million dollars. And this was made up of mostly taxes, property taxes, motor vehicle taxes, and state aid, which is another version of sales tax, income tax, et cetera. And so, we budgeted an extra ten-point-seven million dollars as miscellaneous income. That's not included in the fifty-point-two million dollars, and that's mostly interest. And that number was about four-hundred thousand dollars four years ago. So, this is not income that's consistent. It's not income we can rely on. We know consistently, we're looking at about fifty-point-two million dollars to fund the plethora of capital outlay expenditures that you see listed on the right-hand, right-hand side of this slide. We don't just fund facilities out of capital outlay. We have to fund a lot of our instructional operations out of our capital outlay fund. Some of those examples include CTE technology and equipment, student and staff hardware, student and staff technology and equipment. We do fund school safety, facilities, repairs and preventative maintenance, furniture and equipment replacements, uniforms for sports teams, all the good things. So, we cannot just use that money all for facilities. It does have a lot of conflicting priorities and things that our students and staff use every day in schools. The the gift that keeps on giving, the consent agenda items for East High and North High. So, we've shared this information with the board as well, the growing costs at just two of our eighty-four attendance centers. To date, East High has racked up about nineteen million dollars in structural repairs. North High, we're, I think we're through phase one and phase two in total for costs that are have been encumbered up through the end of fiscal year twenty-five. And phase three and phase four right now are estimated at an additional twenty-two million dollars, and that will come in upcoming fiscal years. So, to date, these two schools, we're planning on them costing around sixty-five million dollars. Again, this is just two of our attendance centers that are creating a lot of pressure on our capital outlay fund. And these are things we have to fix. We can't have crumbling walls, crumbling floors. We have, we don't have extra high schools lying around. And so, these are schools that have to be have to be repaired and fixed. I've also shared this waterfall chart, again, just to add a visual to the urgency of where our capital outlay cash is. We get a lot of criticism for our cash balances. I think you'll hear from the report out this evening that we have very conservative cash. And and I think our unrestricted reserves policy will help support where our cash is sitting and give you a clear picture of that. But capital outlay is something specifically, I know I watch very closely in my role because capital outlay is a fund that we don't get reimbursement for until January and February, when our fiscal year starts in July. So, in order to operate at all, we have to have more than half a year of cash in that fund just to support operations and and keep consent agenda items moving and so forth. And so, I've kind of updated this. So, we we had some estimates based on two-year averages of spending. I've updated it for what has actually happened and estimates going forward. So, there's no surprise that our consistent revenue for fiscal year twenty-five, we budgeted fifty-point-two. We received fifty-point-four million dollars. On average, we are spending just south of eighty million dollars, seventy-nine oh-six-six-five-eight-eight. And so, without adding any additional funding, miscellaneous revenue, transfers from the general fund, et cetera, our ending cash balance at the end of the fiscal year with actual information that the our actual expenditures and revenue would have been fifty-four million dollars. You add in just this next fiscal year, just what we're going to review in our budget report this evening. So, a year of average revenue and another year of what we've been spending on average over the last three years on facilities repairs. And our cash balance gets down to twenty-five million dollars. That is far lower than I would ever recommend from the seat of capital outlay being. That does not get us to January and February in terms of when we have cash going out the door to pay for operating expenditures. So, that's just by the end of next fiscal year. You come out one more fiscal year to fiscal year twenty-seven, and we're in the hole. This is not something that's going to happen. This means we have to make choices. We're, we're, we have to cut expenditures. We have to make a lot more choices without any additional revenue to support facilities needs. So, that picture has not changed. Something I want to echo about the intention with the Financial Oversight Committee was around these three goals. I think when when the bond issue, at the height of all the excitement around the bond issue, some of the feedback that we got was around improving accountability, strengthening trust in the community and increasing transparency, which goes back to communicating plans. We've heard a lot about the two thousand and eight bond issue and needing to add some clarity about all the circumstances that that changed and address some of the concerns around the use of the two thousand and eight bond issue funds. And so, from my seat, those are the things that we are honoring through this committee. We want to improve accountability. We now have a twenty-three-person Oversight Committee that that has their eyes and is getting their experience with our financials and hearing firsthand from experts, not just district staff, on the financial and facilities challenges that we face. And so, just that added layer of external accountability was something that I think we achieved with the Financial Oversight Committee. We definitely want to strengthen trust. I I said this in March, there's no way we could be any more audited than we are. Reading audit reports is not fun. And so, finding ways that we can strengthen trust outside of, you know, using creative methods, the, you know, maybe our other engagement opportunities haven't garnered a ton of engagement. No one goes online to read our annual comprehensive financial report. But they want to engage with us in person. And so, adding some opportunities to strengthen trust through building relationships was another goal that we set through this Financial Oversight Committee. And increasing transparency, everything was laid out on the table. There was every, every truth about our potential cash balance forecast and outlook was provided to the committee. Options for how we either do cost savings, creative revenue solutions were all presented. And so, giving an opportunity to be very transparent and honest about our circumstances. The facts, not misinformation, the facts at hand about our budget, our operating budget and our capital outlay, bond and interest budget was something that I think we accomplished with this Financial Oversight Committee as well. Okay, so I'm going to circle back to the actions that this committee took and give some additional context that's relevant to the board. So, that first action item that we reviewed with the Financial Oversight Committee was that unrestricted reserves policy. You did see this at the May board meeting. We kind of reviewed a draft of the policy and gave some examples of what this would mean for Wichita Public Schools. And so, I believe that is on the agenda this evening for action. And I'm very excited to see this policy go into effect to guide our work with cash balances going forward. So, just another quick overview of this policy, there's a minimum and maximum threshold. The minimum threshold is no less than the average of one state aid payment. And the maximum threshold is up to two months of regular operating budgeted revenues or expenditures, whichever is greater. If unrestricted cash exceeds the maximum threshold, the board will have some jurisdiction over deciding on some one-time investments that don't recreate recurring obligations, one-time taxpayer relief measures or reallocation to restricted reserves for future anticipated obligations. We've shown this before, so just for the sake of repetition, why do we need cash on hand? We need cash on hand because our district functions almost a hundred percent on a reimbursement basis. We have to collect the property taxes in order to fund our budget. State aid, the first LOB and sped state aid payment doesn't even come to us until October, when we've already been operating for four months of the year, a third of our fiscal year gone, and we have not received any major state aid payments. So, there is a significant reason on on why we need a lot of cash on hand. We have to operate for an extended majority of the year without receiving state aid payments and property tax payments. The topic of the hour, another reason why we need cash on hand, and this is an opportunity I will take to give a brief federal funds update. We got word on June thirtieth, when the fiscal year is starting on July first, that disbursements to states for our formula-funded grants that are listed here, so not all of them, but a handful of them, are migrant, are Title II-A Effective Instruction, Title III, English Language Learners, Title IV-A Academic Enrichment, and Title IV-B Twenty-First Century Learning or Stealth, as you may know it, are being held at the federal level for a review by OMB. And that is all the update we have gotten from the federal government at this point in time. This is why we have to have cash on hand in order to continue to cash flow the essential programs that are being provided by federal funds when unforeseen legislative action comes our way. And unforeseen legislative action comes our way almost every year. And so, this is another critical reason why we need healthy cash reserves on hand. Just to to hopefully provide some peace on this topic, and I will give you, our our current KSDE guidance is budget like you have it, spend it like you want. Luckily, we're in a better position to where we can make some different judgment calls on how we proceed, knowing that funds are not, the cash isn't coming to us yet. It's in review. It's not cut for twenty-five, twenty-six. We're just waiting on further guidance. But in light of those developments, we want to make sure, we reassure our staff in any grant-funded FTE positions, there's no cause for concern regarding their pay or their position. The district has sufficient cash reserves to continue to support these programs without interruption. We will, as we have it, share additional information regarding non-salary spending on these grants from any of these impacted grants, and we'll share as soon as we have updates on on additional guidance. So, that's the message I'd like to share this evening on federal programs. Seem to fit well, fit well in our talk about cash.
Can I just make sure we were clear? We don't need to cut staff because of this situation?
We are not cutting staff. We are not pausing programming. We are proceeding with district support regardless. We can cash flow the programs. I still anticipate for us to be able to receive these funds at some point. Again, the guidance has been that it's under OMB review, and so, it should be released to us. We'll, we'll wait for further guidance from OMB and from KSD. But we will continue to support these programs. All staff will keep their positions. They will keep their pay. And programs will be offered.
Melody?
Clearly understand that. But of course,
Clearly understand that, but of course, I'm looking forward, and really being able to kind of glean from some of the other activities and actions that have been taken by this administration, particularly some of the comments that have been made about public education. What if they do not release those dollars? I understand that you're saying that we have the dollars in reserve currently. For how long? So, would we start, would we have to start prioritizing and looking at budgeting differently?
I think every year, right, every year, we have to make choices. We have legislative action that causes us to prioritize our budget. We have cash reserves. We have methods of prioritizing spending. I don't have a long-term answer. I think this is something that needs to go back to district administration, just to talk about options. This is not, I don't think there's cause to get reactive in terms of making judgment calls on cutting programs. Again, we have a large budget, and we can do anything with a large budget. So, certainly Wichita Public Schools has offered more flexibility in terms of our ability to absorb the six point three million dollars of federal funds that are currently on the table for being held. So, long-term is kind of, it's a different answer, certainly. But we don't have enough guidance to add any clarity, if that makes sense. And I don't know if Superintendent Beilefeld wants to jump in?
It does, and I understand not being reactive, but I'm talking about being proactive, and actually putting pen to paper, and looking at, okay, so if this scenario presents, how would we react to it? I'm really trying to be as diplomatic as possible to push us as a district in the direction of actually doing that, and not just waiting.
Yeah, and I think we, I was going to go into some of this during my superintendent report, but I can jump in a little bit now. You know, Congress allocated the dollars, which is their job, and the executive branch allocated the dollars in March, which is their job. And so, this caught us off guard. But I think, I think what you're getting at is, if you look down the road, it feels like more cuts could be ahead, right? So, we have been advocating, both as council great city schools and as a district, I mean, not recently, not in the last week, but earlier, about how important these federal funds are for our district. And again, it's just kind of like the SOL conversation. You know, if you go back all the way to the beginning, you can tell why this started, right? Why do we have these funds in the first place? After fifty, sixty years, sometimes we might forget, well, why do we have these funds? And especially when they have innocuous names like academic enrichment, right? Like, if we all said, what does that mean, we would have seven different answers up here. So, we would need to get into, what does this program look like? Who does it serve? How many kids? All of those kinds of things. That analysis that we honestly do in an ongoing way. But, we know, those of us that have been here for the last two years, how difficult these decisions are. And if these funds go away, what portion of our budget, our total federal funds?
Seventeen percent.
Seventeen percent? That's more than the forty-two million we just had to cut over the last two years. So, it would be, and I'm not saying, again, we don't need to be reactive, it's not doom and gloom, it wouldn't all go away, and my guess, my estimation, but it is concerning, it is concerning.
Six point three million dollars, which is the total value of the awards that are currently being held at the federal level, is the same amount of our budget deficit that we had to resolve this year, and that was grueling work. So, again, not saying, there's no cuts being proposed. We have flexibility in order to look ahead and be able to absorb costs. We're lucky to have a large budget. But prioritization is something we do every single year with every program, so. And cuts at any level, federal or state, would mean prioritization, so. So, we reviewed the example of this policy in action on fiscal year twenty-four's information. I wanted to add some context, which will be beneficial when we go over some unencumbered cash balances. For fiscal year twenty-four, our minimum reserves, looking at the average of one state aid payment, put us at forty-three point seven million dollars. Our maximum, looking at two months of operating expenditures, was ninety-two point two million dollars. At the end of fiscal year twenty-four, that was fifty-eight percent funded, at seventy-one point six million dollars. So, let's go ahead and look at where this is for fiscal year twenty-five. Our state aid grew, our operating budget grew, our unrestricted reserves did not. So, our minimum reserve amount increased to forty-six point four million dollars. That maximum reserve amount is ninety-seven point nine million dollars, and we're currently funded at forty-two percent, or sixty-eight million dollars. We'll go over some recommendations that came from the Financial Oversight Committee, but we were not able to backfill some of these unrestricted reserve funds with any additional dollars to prioritize some short-term funding for facilities needs. And you can see that in our unrestricted reserves. Still within range. We've certainly just lowered a bit in terms of how well-funded our unrestricted reserves are. Action item number two, oh, sure.
Quick, and see, are there any questions about that? And wanted to make sure, framing this, because I think this, we have, Eddie said there's three things, you know, and this, we're through with the first one. So, making sure we define what it is we're talking about with this relationship between you all and the Financial Oversight Committee. And we do a training in the district called Adaptive Schools, and one of the adaptive school strategies is defining the sandbox. So, you know, as a person and a group, what is my sandbox? What are my options? What are we doing with this? From the get-go, and continuing tonight, the Financial Oversight Committee is a recommending body. They are not a decision-making body. So, they recommended this policy that you have in front of you, but they don't make policy, you guys make policy. So, they can recommend this, and you could say, I don't like it, right? Or I want to change it, or whatever, or, they're super smart people, it makes sense to listen to them. But, they are just making a recommendation to us. And so, I think, in terms of all of these conversations, we've heard a lot about unencumbered cash balances, right? We've heard a lot of feedback from this, and so, having this other group look into it and provide feedback and create policy, I think, it makes a lot of sense. When it comes to these other things we're going to be talking about, as far as financial planning, or facilities planning, long-range planning, short-range planning, again, they're making recommendations to you all. And they're also topics that we've received a lot of feedback about. You guys have all received a lot of feedback about. So, I just want to make sure that we don't, that the relationships are clear, right? That's, the trust is built on clear expectations. And so, I wouldn't want anyone from the Financial Oversight Committee feeling like they are a decision-making body, because they're not, they made a recommendation to you all. But I also don't want you guys feeling like, like you aren't the decision-making body, right? They're bringing out a policy, you get to decide if you like it or not. And we'll go on through numbers two and three. And I think the Financial Oversight Committee, as we continue on, will have great value in all sorts of other, because we have plenty of other topics that we feel like need input, and need this kind of scrutiny and input on. But ultimately, the recommendations are brought to you all, I probably should have said this at the start. Recommendations are brought to you all, but it's up to you guys to make a decision, to make a final vote on these things, so. And this one, we got a little bit wonky, because you actually are going to vote later on this one. That's part of why I wanted to stop for questions, just to make sure we were good, so.
And for the record, district administration would advise that the board approve and adopt policy thirty-four sixty?
Also recommend, right?
Yep. Okay, action, sure.
Thank you. So, my question, and actually, it's clarification. It's on, I'm looking at the diagram, yeah, the slide on sixteen. And so, and you already mentioned it. Our revenues, or the amount of funds, dollars that we have, was, it grew ninety-two, what, ninety-two point eight million? And, but it's going, but it's reducing. So, what are we basing that on? It's?
You're ahead, you're ahead a little bit.
She hasn't got over there.
You haven't gotten there.
Okay.
Yep. Yep.
Is it number five?
Yep. So, number five was an example of what capital outlay cash does without miscellaneous revenue, essentially.
No, I was ahead. Yeah, no, I moved ahead.
I got a song, that's my point.
Eddie, would you please give us a brief overview of why this policy is being even recommended, and why the minimum and the maximum were established?
So, the minimum is essentially the unpublished guideline that the district has used for ages for the balance of its contingency reserve. So, the one fund that we consider the rainy day fund, that has no future planned uses. Another oversight body that we work with regularly, who presents us with an award of excellence in financial reporting every year, Government Finance Officers of America recommends that two-month threshold as a minimum of cash reserves. Knowing that we have funds that carry other cash balances, we wanted to consider GFOA's recommendation for unrestricted reserves for that two-month threshold as the maximum threshold for cash balances. This gives you all complete transparency on why district administration recommends cash balances to be at a certain level. It holds us accountable for making sure that we are making decisions in the best interest of the long-term sustainability of the district, and not just issues in front of us right here and right now. To quote my brilliant colleague Connie Reddick, she said the this and the that, right? We have to do this and that at the same time. And so, this policy helps us to do both of those things. Make short-term decisions, but also think in the best interests of the students that are going to be with us in a generation from now. And so, a cash balance is just a general best practice for any municipality to have, to help guide that work, so we don't get in a pickle. And so, that's, those are three good reasons I would say we're recommending a policy be put in place.
Okay, thank you for that. I think, Stan, did you have a question?
No, I was ready for it.
So, seeing no further questions?
Perfect.
We may continue.
So, action item number two was a recommendation on a short-term funding solution, which for us generally means allocating some one-time year-end budget fallout, year-end cash savings is what we refer to that as, into either, either putting it into unrestricted reserves to better fund those, or make a recommendation to transfer those dollars into capital outlay to help fund some one-time facilities needs. And the recommendation from the committee that came from District Administration's recommendations as well, was the, we were able to transfer approximately seventeen point four million dollars from the general budget over to capital outlay to help support some of the needs and facilities for next year. I'd like to add some context to that, right? Our anticipated bill for North High next year is twenty-two million dollars. So, this one-time transfer is not even covering the costs we're anticipating for one high school next year. I also want to re-clarify, this transfer came from the general operating budget. When we have year-end cash savings, we have to prioritize what to do with those year-end cash savings, and we have a lot of options. We can fund one-time professional development and training for teachers. We can fund future curriculum adoptions, supplemental one-time textbook purchases, book purchases, supplies for classrooms, additional technology upgrades. We have a lot of options in terms of how we use those funds. Without the February twenty-fifth bond referendum, and knowing we have some really urgent facilities needs, those were not options for us this year. And we had to repurpose our operating budget savings to support facilities needs. And that came at District Administration's recommendation, because of all the costs that we foresee coming in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So, without additional funding for facilities, we are diverting general fund operating budget to support facilities needs. I'm going to take this opportunity to kind of go over some unencumbered cash balances with you as well. Our year-end transfers and cash balances is something that's in your consent agenda item, items, and so want to just touch base on some of the major players in that unencumbered cash balance. So, capital outlay, these are what I am going to refer to as the big three, right? They make up a huge majority of our unencumbered cash, and we can't use them for any other purpose than what they're intended for. So, capital outlay grew from eighty-four million to almost ninety-three million, so an eight point eight million dollar increase. Self-funded reserves, so this is our health insurance programs, dental insurance, vision insurance, as well as our self-funded disability program and workers' comp programs. So, that cash balance, last fiscal year was sixty-six point six million, it's sitting at sixty-seven million dollars. And then, our bond and interest fund, which last fiscal year ended at eighty-three million dollars, and we're currently sitting at ninety-four point six million dollars. Again, every dime of that bond and interest money is set aside for future debt payments. We cannot access it for anything else. So, we've got ninety-four point six million dollars sitting on the books, and we can't do anything with it. It's there because it's obligated already, we need it for future mortgage payments. So, in total, the growth in those big three funds was twenty point seven million dollars. In total, our unencumbered cash increased from thirty, three hundred and forty-eight point five million dollars to three hundred and sixty-two million dollars. That was only an increase of thirteen point five million. So, that, what that means is, while the big three grew, and really, it's bond and interest, right? We collected to pay off future debt obligations. That means cash balances and other funds decreased. Because otherwise, our total cash would have grown to twenty point seven. So, cash decreased somewhere. So, now, what you will see in our state budget forms this year is that unencumbered cash at three hundred and sixty-two million dollars. You now have an unrestricted reserve policy that will support you in helping to explain those unencumbered cash balances. And you have some context to answer questions about the big three funds that make up a huge majority of that unencumbered cash, and that we can't use them for anything other than those intended purposes. And boy, do they have plans, let me tell you. So, Melody, here's slide sixteen. This was an update, considering the recommendation from the Financial Oversight Committee to transfer that seventeen point four million dollars over into capital outlay, as well as recognizing, I think it was thirteen or fourteen million dollars of interest income that we transferred to capital outlay as well. So, considering that revenue and the expenditures for last year, you can see our ending cash in capital is actually ninety-two point eight million dollars. So, we're going to do the same forecast, we're going to go out one more fiscal year, average revenue, not taking, no additional transfers from general operating budget, and the same amount of average expenditures we've been doing over the last three years. We're at sixty-four million dollars by the end of next fiscal year. That's a decent spot. It's not quite a year of operations, but it gets us through that January, February timeline to where we have to be able to cash flow expenditures. Going out one more year to fiscal year twenty-seven, your cash balance drops to thirty-five million dollars. That is the lowest cash balance capital outlay we'll have seen since the Gannon case, twenty eighteen nineteen. I would not recommend to lower your cash balance to this amount. This does not get us one extraordinary event, AKA a science wing collapsing in a high school, and half a year of operations. We don't have enough at thirty-five million dollars to fund those two things. So, this is lower than I would recommend by the end of fiscal year twenty-seven.
So, can I, I just need some clarification.
Yep.
Looking at our cash balance of beginning balance of the eighty-four zero nine seven
Yep.
and change, and then come, going over to the twenty-twenty-five ending balance, ninety-two eight eight seven. Are we saying that that increase was mainly bond and interest?
No, this is all capital outlay. So, this was from general funds being transferred over to capital outlay, as well as all the interest income that the district made last year being transferred over to capital outlay.
So, how much, where do I see the break? So, how much, where do I see the breakout of capital outlay and interest?
There should probably be a revenue report in your packet if we, if you want the breakout, but that's something I could provide you.
Okay. I just wanted to know exactly-
So, back on slide five, that was the revenue, that $50.4 million-
Yeah.
-that was the revenue without the transfer and without interest income.
Okay.
So, it's 50.4 without those two things. Adding in those two things, it was that $85.5 million, that first blue bar.
And we're estimating, we're keeping the expenses steady, it appears.
Yes.
Even though we know that we do transfer funds from our general fund into this fund in order to pay for whatever it is that we need to pay for.
We do, yes. There are other options for that, those year-end budget savings other than facilities.
And I'm, I'm saying that just to say that that $50 million, that's pretty constant, is more than likely more than that. It can be more than that.
Yes, it can be considering those miscellaneous revenue sources if we transfer interest income and if we make a general fund transfer. So, that's taking money outside of your operating budget, which is mostly, you know, budgeted for salaries for those ongoing costs of the district, not necessarily one-time facilities' needs. So, we are repurposing funding that was intended for instruction-
Mm-hmm.
-to fund and transfer it over to facilities.
Brick and mortar. And that's going to impact our ending balance ultimately.
Yes, yep. And it did, and we needed it too, because as you saw, the forecast without that transfer by the end of fiscal year '26 was not favorable. The cash balance was lower than I would recommend taking capital outlay, which means we're cutting expenditures. We're not investing in facilities, so.
So, the, slide three, that green, that's the miscellaneous, that's the interest. And then, action step two is the 17, which is the decision being made.
Yeah.
So, you add those two together plus the 50, and that's-
Yep.
That's that-
Does that make sense?
Yes, but once I get to it, which page you-
So, slide three.
That's like the first-
The very beginning.
Yeah.
The very beginning.
So, slide, yeah, slide three was the budgeted revenues. We budgeted to receive $10.7 million in that miscellaneous income, which is interest income, essentially.
Got it.
Some random miscellaneous bits of, you know, selling furniture or land. Now, that ended up being more like $13 or $14 million, because shout-out to our treasury program, they do an excellent job. But yes, that's money that we don't always anticipate receiving. And I don't know how long interest rates will stay at their current levels. There's a lot of unknowns in that municipal market right now. Again, four years ago, that number was $400,000. So, it's not a reliable source of income that we can cash flow supporting facilities out 20 years.
And I think probably the larger point, at least for me, from my vantage point, is that's $13 million and $17 million, we could have done something else with, but we can't because we have to fix the buildings.
Got it.
Because, because of the situation we're in. So, textbook adoption, I know you rattled off a few things.
Yep.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't hire people with it because it's not ongoing money, it's one-time money. But we could, we could do significant things that really align more with our strategic plan. You know, fixing exteriors of buildings isn't really part, I mean, it's kind of safety. It's kind of safety, but it really isn't the main parts of our plan that we're trying to achieve when it comes to graduation rate and teaching kids to read and getting them ready for life, so. Okay?
Good, okay.
We'll get it.
So, action item number three that we posed to the Financial Oversight Committee was looking at long-term facilities' needs and funding them. The committee was provided with options for funding long-term facilities' needs, which included a bond referendum option with the November 2025 or March of 2026 timeline. The committee was asked to collect feedback from their peer groups and community support for these options. At this time, I'm going to call up a very special volunteer, Lindsay Poursot, who is the vice chair of our Financial Oversight Committee. Lindsay has offered significant experience to the committee, and I'm very grateful to her for speaking with you this evening to do the official report out on all of the actions that the committee has taken and to further address the committee's recommendation for action item number three. So, I'll turn it over to Lindsay.
All right, thank you, Addie. So, morning President, or good morning, I'm so used to being at the commission, I apologize. Just autopilot, don't tell them I did that. Good evening, President Albert, Vice President McCray Miller, Superintendent Billfield, and the illustrious board members. So, I do want to take a moment and say, yes, I am a volunteer, but so are all of you. And you're here at 7:55 on a Monday night doing work for kids. And so, I want to commend you for what you do and thank you for what you do. It so matters. I do work for Sedgwick County, and your kids are our future workforce. So, we appreciate you training them up good. I also want to say thank you for the Financial Oversight Committee vision that I know that you all had and for allowing us to be a part of it and for also letting me sit on it has been, I have learned so much. I thought I knew stuff before, but I've learned a lot. So, just real quick, I want to say that yes, I am the vice chair, one of the two vice chairs for our Financial Oversight Committee. I sit with Paul Lavender, who is the vice chair for parents. I represent community. So, I'm delighted to stand here in that capacity and speak behalf, on behalf of the committee. So, as Addie said, over the past several months, our committee has worked with and learned from district administration. Addie has thrown so much information at us and has done a great job of explaining it, has been patient with all of her questions, and so, I just want to express my appreciation. We also, as Addie alluded to, have engaged deeply with community members. We were tasked to go out and talk with our circles and find out why folks voted yes for the bond, voted against the bond, what their thoughts are on another bond, so that we could come back and give you the best feedback possible. And I will tell you that I was an enthusiastic, proud yes voter in February. And so, appreciated the opportunity to, to come and learn more about why other folks maybe weren't as enthusiastic as me. So, what we have learned is that while there is absolutely support in investing in schools, what we have heard from the community is clear, and that support for a bond is not automatic, it's conditional. And what they want to understand is what exactly will be funded in a future bond? What's changed since February that would maybe make it why another bond is now the right time? And how will Wichita Public Schools ensure accountability? And I think that's something that you've heard from so many of the speakers tonight. So, there is skepticism, unfortunately. We all know that there was a great recession in 2008. It affected all of us. It was a recovery unlike anything else. There were federal funds, there were state recessions, there were all kinds of things that came in and played a role in why the 2008 bond issue perhaps didn't work out the way that it was visioned or originally communicated. But folks have not heard that explanation, and they want it. We also know that there are folks who have seen the facilities' master plan, of which only a portion is going to be funded with the bond. But some of those items are seen as more wants and less as needs. And so, again, that clear communication of what will be funded with bond proceeds is going to be critical as a part of overcoming that skepticism. Without a compelling and transparent case, it does seem like securing that support is going to be a real challenge. We also know that tax sensitivity plays a role. So, my day job is the CFO for Sedgwick County. Please don't throw anything at me, I don't work in the appraiser's office. But we do hear a lot about property taxes, right? It's the Sedgwick County treasurer that sends out the bill and collects those funds. It's our Sedgwick County clerk that sends your R and R notice, all of the fun stuff that we're about to come through. So, we know, I know, that property taxes are an exceptionally touchy subject right now. And so, what folks want to see is that every other opportunity to not do property taxes can be evaluated. Are there creative solutions? Are there ways to go to the legislature and talk about a different approach for public schools that rely so much on property tax? Also, if, and this was an option that was presented to the Financial Oversight Committee that was then presented to our peers and our circles, and that was to ask about maybe breaking the bond into chunks. Show the community that a smaller chunk can be achieved, done well, have it be transparent, and then come back and do another bond issue. I do think, you know, in 2008, I was living in Lawrence, Rock Chalk. I have no idea what happened in this community. But it also then means that a lot of people my age and my peer group have no idea what the basis was for the 2008 bond issue. We're not used to seeing bond issues on our ballots. So, are there opportunities to think about strategies from that perspective? We also know that timing is critical. We have heard, the Financial Oversight Committee clearly heard, the urgency that is needed. We saw the same financial projections that you did, and it is a bleak story. But what we have also heard from the community is that they're not ready for another bond vote. They're not ready this November. There needs to be more transparent communication and explanation and rebuilding that trust. And also, nearly unanimously, I was shocked to hear that most folks actually don't want a March election either. Some people feel like there being, the word I had heard thrown around was strategized or manipulated to voting in, in a special election as opposed to a general election. And I certainly understand all of the concerns. If we look at a November 2026 ballot, that's going to be a gubernatorial ballot, there's likely going to be some constitutional questions. I've already heard, I live in Senator Ty Masterson's district, I received a mailer just a couple of weeks ago that talked about a constitutional amendment that would cap assessed values. That would have significant impact on your school district and your revenue source. So, we're not blind to that, but we also want to try and help the district get to yes. And we know that there are significant obstacles. So, for now, the recommendation is not to proceed with a bond vote in this upcoming school year for '25 and '26. And again, the concerns that I heard were rushing back to another bond vote, repeating whatever mistakes may have occurred in February, especially I heard earlier about the survey results, and the voting just didn't match the survey results. What caused that? There are some speculations, but digging into that and understanding that. Most bitter, most voters indicated that they believe in investing in public schools, but they're asking for a more meaningful engagement process. They want clear and repeated communications, not just through town halls. They want authentic two-way dialogue, not just what they felt sometimes were one-way presentations of material. And most of all, a clear demonstration of fiscal responsibility and public accountability. So, with even the Financial Oversight Committee, I think that is an important step, and I don't know how much awareness there is in the community. That is a great sound effect. You're fine. So, I do think even now, as I get to the recommendations, you'll hear that the Financial Oversight Committee has requested to continue to meet, to try and help provide feedback to, to district administration, to the board as necessary, to try and help shape that message and also to understand what are our kind of expanded role here. Three more meetings yet this year, it sounds like we'll have a laundry list of things to do from the superintendent. Oh, well, you know, we're here, we asked for it, right? So, put us, put us to work. So, I think there really is a unique opportunity to build a foundation of trust, not just for a bond, but for the long-term health of Wichita Public Schools. So, again, just to kind of reiterate, based on what we've heard and learned, the Financial Oversight Committee recommends tabling any bond vote for the 2025-2026 school year. Instead, we propose the district focus on three key areas. Trust building through transparent communication, public accountability and open financial practices, maybe even including review of current policies against best practices from GFOA, which is the group that Addie referenced earlier. If we can help in that arena, we would be happy to. Cross-sector collaboration, particularly for large-scale or innovative projects like the Future Ready Center, to leverage community and economic development partnerships, because again, it's a workforce issue. It's something our entire community needs. And then, finally, strategic planning for the next bond proposal, using community feedback, clear messaging, and verified oversight mechanisms to build confidence. I know that our FOC members have other ideas too that they are ready to chat about, to try and add value, and so, we can save that for a future agenda item with the FOC. But certainly, we are committed to supporting this work. We'll look forward to reconvening in the fall. And again, I want to say thank you for your service, for engaging the community in this fashion, for your dedication to fiscal stewardship. The needs are urgent, but we believe with continued collaboration and accountability, we can meet them in a way that earns and sustains community trust. So, sorry, that was a lot more than I intended to say.
Thank you, Lindsay. We do have a question. Stan?
Lindsay, the next time the committee meets, would you ask them a very simple question?
Tell me the question, and then I'll tell you.
Okay. If we wait till November of '26, that means we will have a deficit in the capital outlay budget. We will then be looking at telling our citizens for the first half of the school year of '27 that when something happens, there's a possibility that we will not be able to fix it. We just won't have the money to fix it. Would that, ask, ask the committee, is it worth heading to November with the possibility that heading to November would mean months of telling the community something won't get fixed and how that would influence the election?
I'm going to take over for Lindsay because she probably has her own fiscal year-end stuff to worry about, or all these revenue-neutral rate statements that are about to go out, which is another fun topic we get to address this evening. But just for added clarity, because of the recommendations that came from the Financial Oversight Committee, our cash at the end of fiscal year '26 into fiscal year '27 is, is fine and healthy.
It, it's there, but the trend, the trend is we're already pulling from the general fund to go over into capital outlay. And sort of what the superintendent was saying was what we have not been clear about is the fact that, and this goes back to transparency and explaining our situation, I will also make the case that a big thing happened in 2008, and that was the death of your traditional media. There is no one way to get out a clear message anymore about what we are trying to do with a bond issue. So, that is a big, that's the big, a big thing that happened. But the trend is we're transferring from general funds to capital outlay, and that is, and that is deficits, that is deficit spending in my mind. And so, what I'm wondering, if we don't keep doing that, and we can't keep being creative in the Future Ready Centers, is that worth the trade-off of waiting till November of '26? See, I don't, I don't know if that's been discussed enough.
And it was, and maybe not enough. I, I will reserve to others what the definition of enough is. But I will tell you that it was discussed in the Financial Oversight Committee, and honest, the honest impression from the consensus of the group was that if one went sooner, it would not be successful. That was what we, we heard. Now, we're not consultants, we're not experts, we don't study votes, we don't know what message strategy can be done. But there were some creative ideas about potentially trying to lower the current mill levy rate from 7.5 mils to allow that to continue for a bit. And then, potentially, if you do chunk out your bonds into future years and have less of a gap between them, but, but potentially, there are ways to overcome what you're talking about. Now, I am not your CFO, you have an awesome one sitting right there, so I don't want to speak for her. But I do want to give you some assurance that that was talked about, and it was a real concern for the group. Addie made an excellent case for the urgency of what is needed for Wichita Public Schools. But unfortunately, we just, the data that we heard from our peers and our circles, and again, people who want to support schools, was that the confidence was not there.
Yeah.
Somewhere, there's a gap.
So, they- So they feel that a tax rate increase bond issue could win?
They're actually, while the general consensus from what I heard was that a level tax rate or a decreased tax rate is preferable, if the case could be made, there would potentially be support for that.
And then when you went to the bond and said, we're now going back up to 7.5, which is still well below what our surrounding suburban communities have invested in theirs, that now we're talking about a tax increase just to get us back up to what we were?
My only hope for you is our assessed values going up. Mine went up 8.6%, so a mil is worth a lot more now than it used to be.
Another fun topic that we'll be discussing this evening.
That's my only consolation is, I think, depending on strategy, which I will defer to Addie, I think there are opportunities. I truly do. I would not stand here, look you in the face, and carry this message on behalf of the Financial Oversight Committee if I did not truly think there was a path to success.
I want to thank Lindsay and the rest of our committee members who donated a lot of time to carrying out these tasks and attending these meetings and learning all the fun things about school finance. These were individuals who want a yes vote for Wichita Public Schools. They want to see us succeed.
They weren't.
Well, I just am incredibly grateful for all of the contributions from this volunteer committee and their work. This was not an easy thing for them to take the district administration recommended options and go off-charts, right? To come back with candid feedback for us to listen to, that's not an easy thing. And so I commend Lindsay for your willingness to stand here tonight to share that feedback. I know it's very difficult. I have really appreciated working with this group to making sure that we do what's best for kids. Sometimes that means we have to do what's best for adults, and so that's what property taxes are sometimes. The candid feedback was something for us to consider and think through as we're looking ahead to mill levy recommendations, looking at assessed valuations, looking at our R&amp;R. So unless there's other questions, I'd like to release Lindsay, and I can move on to some other relevant facts that I think will help drive some additional conversation on this topic.
Lindsay, thank you very much for your time. We appreciate you being here after 8:00 at night with us. We will be here much longer. But with that, Addie, go ahead.
Perfect. So I'm gonna jump into kind of the budget report. You've seen some of the action items that came out of the Financial Oversight Committee, and I'll share some additional details about how that looks in our upcoming budget. We're approaching, this was kind of our year-end meeting, and we need to have some conversation about our mill levies as we approach the July 20th deadline to submit our revenue-neutral rate, intent to exceed revenue-neutral rate form. August 4th, we will look to review to publish our notice of hearing, and September 8th is set for both our budget and revenue-neutral rate hearings as well as the budget adoption. So those are kind of the remaining major milestones along our budget timeline. So we're gonna chat about mill levies, and a lot of what we accomplished with the Financial Oversight Committee is gonna contribute into this conversation this evening. So every board member that's here tonight has been through this revenue-neutral rate process, I think at least twice, once or twice, but for the benefit of the group, want to make sure that there's a lot of moving pieces and parts in school finance, and so reminders at times are nice. So revenue-neutral rate means that for the upcoming tax year, so we're looking ahead at 2026, that we would generate the same property tax revenue as we levied in the previous tax year, or 2025. This means if we do not exceed the revenue-neutral rate, there are no new funds to pay for our increasing funds. We get the same amount next year as we got this year. It comes with an added slew of deadlines that do not organically fit into our school finance process. So I would never recommend having to publish a estimated mill levy on July 20th, but that's the deadline for when we have to submit this form to the county clerk so they can generate estimated property tax bills to send out to constituents with a mill rate that's not going to be the mill rate that we ultimately adopt and approve in our budget. So they'll send out all of those mailers, which I think is what generates some activity for you all. And so that's what's relevant in our conversation, is I want you to feel prepared for the mailers that will go out, so you can help to deter fears or questions related to those estimated property tax statements. We'll hold our hearing on this intent to exceed the revenue-neutral rate and our budget on September 8th. We have to submit our budget to KSDE by the 20th, and we submit it to the county clerk by October 1st. So those are some of our upcoming combined deadlines. They don't all fit well together, but we make it work. So when we start this conversation to look at what our mill rates have to be, there is a lot of moving pieces and parts and things that change. We talked a little bit about unforeseen legislative activity. There's some unforeseen activity that occurs with assessed property values, with the state aid rates that we get. But the basis of where we start is what do we need to operate in the upcoming fiscal year? And that comes back to our budget. And so I've shared this with the board a couple of times previously. I do want to share an update to the base state aid amount. We've been previously looking at estimated operating budget amounts with a base state amount of 5611. That has finalized and is 5615, so it's positive, moving the positive. These numbers will adjust slightly as we complete the state budget forms and bring our notice of hearing back to you because we want to estimate a little bit higher. We want our legal maximums to give us some flexibility, just in case we have, you know, additional pre-K enrollment, additional ESOL contact hours, et cetera. So we're gonna come in a little higher, but that's what we actually anticipate will be our budget in the upcoming fiscal year. So this is the basis of where we start. So then we have to take other factors into consideration. Cedric County assessed valuations is an unknown to us. We have to receive these amounts by June 15th when we start our fiscal year, on July 1st. That's not a lot of time to plan. And so we get these estimates, and these are not finalized until November. So these numbers change for property owners as well. We operate on these estimates to create our budget, and then they kind of finalize on property tax statements through November for the 2026 upcoming tax year. Right now, we are anticipating an average increase of around 8.7% on property values in Cedric County for Wichita Public Schools property owners. So LOB is looking at an 8.5% increase in assessed property values. The general fund is 9.8%, and capital outlay is 8.28%. So when we have an eight mils levied on capital outlay, and your assessed valuation goes up, and we're keeping our rate the same, we do generate more in local property taxes. Let's talk about where this bites us in the behind. So in our school finance formula, we also receive some equalization state aid in various funds. And so what the state does is they collect all the property tax values from every county across the state, and they index you. They say, you know, on the spectrum, this is where your district falls in terms of how wealthy or poor your district is because of your assessed property values. And so they place you on that index. They assign the rate of equalization state aid you are going to receive. So we're talking about planning for your 7-1 fiscal year start date based on data that they don't give to us until after June 15th. Counties don't have to report this until June 15th. So somewhere in between the last three weeks, KSDE was able to give us these equalization state aid rates. Because of the rate of how our assessed values have gone up in this upcoming tax year, we are actually losing money on our state aid percentages. The rest of the state did not keep up with our assessed valuations. That means the state expects us to use more of our local property tax dollars to support those budgets. So we are seeing significant decreases in the level of state aid we will receive in the supplemental general fund, the capital outlay fund, and the bond and interest fund. So yes, while our assessed valuation goes up, our state aid goes down. It's a net-net, right?
Just for my clarity as much as anything, that index that you talked about was completed by county.
So the counties complete all of their assessed valuations, and they all have their own methods for how they value, you know, value properties in their counties. They submit that data to KSDE. KSDE then puts every district on a scale essentially to determine where you fall across all the districts. If you fall in the middle, if you kind of are on the higher end, if you fall on the lower end, and then they assign you a state aid rate based on where you fall in that index.
By district?
By district, yes, by district. So again, decreases in state aid percentages means that all of these associated budgets need to be supported with larger percentages of local property taxes. So here's the fun slide, and we'll just go line by line.
This is another commentary, but it's the state. I mean, they supposedly gave us a property tax reduction, and then they reduced our state aid based on the fact that they didn't increase their assessed valuations. What the heck?
Well, I have the same question.
The intention, and so...
The history of the equalization state aid is that the poorer districts are getting a higher proportion of state aid distribution. And because assessed values in Cedric County have increased, that means our wealth is higher compared to other districts in the state of Kansas. So the mechanism is working as it was designed in the current school finance formula to help supplement districts who don't, are not driving property tax revenue because their assessed values are lower. It goes to support them, and we have been the benefactor of that. Many school districts do not receive any equalization state aid, so we do benefit from it. It's not a bad thing. But the concept of assessed values are increasing, so that means your budget is going up, that's not always true either. We are impacted in multiple ways and multiple revenue streams, and this year, not every year, this doesn't happen to us every year, this year, because of that very high rate of increase to our assessed valuations, we're losing money in state aid, and we have no control over this. So it's not always a bad thing for Wichita Public Schools. It has benefited Wichita Public Schools a lot to have that equalization state aid this year. It didn't help us.
These decreases are bigger than what?
These, I have never seen us, I've really only seen us increase or stay pretty flat. It's been within 2%. So this 7% decrease in state aid on capital outlay and bond and interest is painful.
Yeah, significantly.
It's painful. And this was details we learned after the last Financial Oversight Committee, right? So these constantly changing circumstances are always coming our way. Another great reason to have cash on hand. Gosh, I am just a broken record tonight. Okay. So here's kind of a revenue-neutral rate summary, and I know there's a lot of numbers on this slide, so I want to go slow, and I want to make sure that we have a deep understanding of what each of these things mean. So I'm gonna start in that kind of second teal column, 2024-2025 actual mil rate. So this is the mil after all the final assessed valuations and all the property tax collections have come in. This was what we actually levied, and the mil rate that was used to levy those taxes for last fiscal year. So the general fund, again, is set by statute 20 mils. Capital outlay, 8 mils, maximum also set by statute. Our supplemental general fund last year was at 15.776 mils. You see an asterisk next to this because you will remember that we bought this down using some contingency funds. We intentionally lowered this mil. This supported us with some budget reduction process, so we intentionally bought this mil down. Our actual bond and interest mil rate after final assessed valuations, it wasn't 7.5, it was 7.511. That just comes because after final assessed valuations were a little lower in November than they were in July when we prepared our budget last year. And so these numbers always change, they always change a little bit. For special liability, we levied a .1, and the cash balance in that fund decreased significantly because in order to help levy, or level out the rest of the mil, we wanted to take that one down a bit. But we still needed enough coming in to help support operations in that fund. So that total other funds is the combination of supplemental general, bond and interest, and special liability. And that is pertinent because the county only gives us a revenue-neutral rate for all three of those funds combined, they don't break it out. And so we combine them for those purposes. Our total mil rate for last fiscal year was 51.387. So this revenue-neutral rate process, the county then communicates to us what our rate would have to be in order for us to stay revenue-neutral. And you can see that in total, and I'm gonna drop down to the very bottom row, total increase or decrease, in order to stay revenue-neutral, we would have to decrease our mil rate by 4.14 mils. This board always takes a conservative approach with our mil rate and offers property tax savings through reducing the mil rate when possible. I have never seen a mil rate reduction of that amount, and as you will see in kind of that green column next, it's really not possible with our budget this year. We cannot stay revenue-neutral. There is no way. Without significant cuts to our budget, there's no way to stay revenue-neutral. So the 25-26 estimated mil rate column, and I want to reiterate, this is still an estimate. Staff are still working with those budget forms, there's still a lot of incoming facts. We don't have all the facts to build this budget yet. So even between now and the 20th, things may change a little bit. Between now and August 4th, when we bring our kind of final budget picture to you, this will change. We'll have a more solid picture. So this is estimating conservatively, and so we'll just kind of go through these pieces as well. General fund, again, set by statute 20 mils. Capital outlay, considering our extensive facilities needs, I would never recommend levying anything less than the maximum authority of 8 mils. Right now, in the supplemental general fund, because we bought that down and we cannot continue to buy our mil rate down forever, because our state aid has decreased in our supplemental general fund, and we have to make that up with some local property taxes, our estimated mil rate in the supplemental general fund is 17.314 mils. So that's up a bit from the 15.776 that we ended the last fiscal year with. Looking ahead at bond and interest, with the assumption of not having an active bond referendum in the 25-26 school year, but still looking ahead at what we need to collect to support our existing debt schedule, having to take into consideration that our state aid decreased a lot in bond and interest as well. Our financial advisor has recommended a mil of 5.5 mils in bond and interest. For special liability, we did drop that down intentionally last year. Our cash balance dropped, and we do have costs coming out of that fund, and it needs some replenishment. And so looking to levy a .5 mil for special liability. In total, our estimated mil rate right now is 51.314 mils, which is just a slight decrease. You can see the additional taxes, each of these mil rates levies based on the assessed valuations of each of these individual funds. But this is the money that we need that will essentially replace the state aid that we are losing from that equalization aid. So in total, that's kind of what our estimated mil rate is going to be. I want to talk about what this means for taxpayers. Again, this is not final, but this may be an example of what they could see on their estimated statement that will go out here in just a few short weeks. And this is the, just for the median home price in Wichita right now. And again, not every single homeowner or property owner will see that flat 8.7% increase. Some may see higher, some may see none. So this is not a across-the-board methodology that will work for everyone. But on average, if you have a median home price of $200,000 last year... But on average, if you have a median home price of $200,000 last year, um, with a 51.387 mill rate, you were paying $1,181.90 to Wichita Public Schools. Considering an 8.7% increase to your um, your appraised value of your home, um, with a 51.314 estimated mill rate, you're generating, your home is generating um, $1,282.90 for Wichita Public Schools. So this would be an incre- an annual increase of $101. It's about $8.41 a month for um, a property owner of a median home price. So what is our revenue neutral rate form going to look like? Um, there's still a lot moving, lots of pieces and parts. And I, my job is to allow us as much flexibility as possible as we approach approving and adopting those mill rates in the budget. And so um, giving us some leeway, once we fill this form out and those estimated property tax statements go out, we cannot levy any more than we have put on um, on that statement. So and we'd we'd come in lower, so we always want to go high on this form because there's no opportunity to go higher after we fill this form out. So I wanted to provide you what uh, what you will see e- even on your own estimated property tax statements from Cedric County and what constituents will see in terms of that estimated mill rate. This will not be our final mill rate. It's higher. We're going to come down when we look at the budget in August. Um, but I think it's fair to share with the board ahead of you potentially seeing, receiving some feedback um, uh, from from local constituents on um, this estimated property tax statement that they'll be receiving, so. With that said, I think that's the end of all the fun topics I have for you all this evening. And I know we're eager for some discussion and questions. I'm going to look to Superintendent Beilefeld to add some context.
So I, one question, I should know this stuff, you know, I've been here for three years too. So could you tell us, if you go back to slide 25?
Okay.
I think I understand, but I want to make sure it's clear for everybody. Why is there no bond and interest in that middle column?
Um, so when they give us that revenue neutral mill rate from the county, they lump all of those other funds into one number. So they don't break out what would be revenue neutral between LOB, bond and interest and special liability. They just give us one lump sum.
So if the decision was to stay revenue neutral, we would take that lump sum and we divide it between those?
That's right.
Yeah, okay. Um, the other thing that that Addie and I, I, obviously the the state aid curve ball um, that happened in the last, I think it was right before.
Week and a half, yeah.
Yeah, about 10 days ago when Addie texted and was like, hey, by the way. Um, I think that that changed some things. I think there'll there'll be more information to come. Um, I do think there's, there's no decision tonight that needs made other than is the consensus to exceed revenue neutral rate. So we don't have to, we don't have to land on it on numbers tonight. Um, and I think it would make a lot of sense to schedule a workshop in the next week or two to dig into this, be able to ask some more questions because it's a lot to swallow. So um, I'm not saying we have to do that, but I would just offer that as a suggestion because heck, I've had a lot of questions this night, so I'm sure everybody else does too, so.
Okay. Kathy?
Oh.
Did you have a question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you not log in? Kathy?
Thank you. Okay, so you kind of alluded to this, that this information on the state aid rates came out after the oversight committee met.
That's right.
Do you think that if the oversight committee learned this, they might change their mind?
I am not going to ask Melody to step back up to the podium or speculate about um, about political opinions, but.
Well, I think that it would behoove the district if the oversight committee knew about this as soon as possible. Um, because i- if they needed to come up with some creative ideas um, to move forward with what the district needs, I mean, and also I wanted to, this kind of goes with it. Um, with with the federal pause, how is that going to affect all of this? And that we are at a critical point right now with our district and we are going to have to do something. And if the oversight committee can come earlier than later, and um, yeah.
The committee did request some additional dates in the fall. Um, and so we're eager to share developments with the committee, extra pressures that the district is facing financially. Um, the truth of the matter is every year we face these kind of pressures.
Not like this.
We're in a state of declining enrollment, we're constantly having to evaluate financial pressures. Um, so th- this was a very experienced, very intuitive, very supportive group of individuals. Um, and so, you know, I think they see the challenges, they know the challenges. Their kids go to school in our buildings, they they see it firsthand. Um, so they they want um, you all to be successful. They want us to be successful. So their feedback was um, in the best interest of that success. And um, yes, I think the committee was very well aware that there's constantly additional pressures that are facing.
But everything's moving. Um, so what's going on right now might not be going on next week.
Well, and this goes back to what the superintendent said about, the committee made a recommendation about facts that they had as of June 18th.
Right.
Facts have changed and um, you all are the deciders.
Right.
Um, they made a recommendation about the facts they had and the info they got. We have additional facts. Um, we will continue to have additional facts that will impact our our budget and our decision making. Those will never stop. And and so you all are ultimately, you guys get to adopt and approve the mill rate. Um, you guys are the ones that um, that adopt and approve a bond resolution. So you can take the facts from me, you can take the feedback from committees, you can take the feedback from um, our amazing principals who came back and spoke this evening, from our business partners and community partners, um, to ultimately make that decision on behalf of the district. And this is just one piece of the puzzle that we have to have done and do by July 20th.
Wow, that's it.
Nox?
Yeah, I was going to say I support the recommendations of the financial oversight uh, committee. I support Trish Howman's recommendations and I do support Katie Warren's uh, recommendations. I do want to elevate one recommendation in particular, and that is to, for the financial oversight committee, uh, moving forward to have a designated educator representative and to have a designated classified staff representative um, on the financial oversight committee. Um, if a a board motion and a board vote is what it takes for that to transpire, I will gladly uh, initiate that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Nox. I will pose the question to you, Addie. Uh, what options are there on the table? I guess Gil is the, is the official chair of the financial oversight committee to answer Nox's request.
And you know, Katie and I have had really good conversations about this and I think um, the the intentions from the get-go with the financial oversight committee were parent and community, right? That that was the whole point of it. But have we seen a a lack of engaging educators in the last few months? A hundred percent yes. I don't know that the solution is to add community, you know, staff onto this group. Um, but there is, in my mind, there is a solution where we engage staff in a, in a, in a better way, a different way, and not necessarily a different way, but maybe a parallel way. Um, we have a meeting tomorrow. We really wanted to get through tonight to see kind of where everything, what what the timelines were like. Um, we have a meeting tomorrow at 11 to, for this very topic of what does uh, staff engagement look like moving forward. So I don't know if that is the answer, but that's, that's the answer at at 8:38 tonight. I I recognize it. I mean, I recognize that uh, we can't do this without um, not only just teachers, but you know, Matt and Connie and everybody else, right? Um, we need those folks that live it to help us understand it. Um, because even a financial oversight committee, our kids go there, right? But our kids all go to different schools, there's 90 schools. Um, we don't live it, right? We don't live it in the same way that a teacher does, so. But but I don't, I I'm not, I'm not certain that the answer is if we, if we put one teacher and one classified staff member on this group, problem solved. Engagement happens, right? I I don't know that that's really the answer, so I don't, is that fair?
We we, just to go back, um, Superintendent Beilefeld mentioned a parallel way to engage staff. I think we have some ideas. Um, I'm only one human, I can only do one committee thing at a time. Um, lots of ideas as I've stepped into this role in terms of how we can engage staff in meaningful conversations around the budget. Um, the financial oversight committee is a very directed group um, with a task assigned and delegated by the superintendent. Um, I do think that parallel opportunity to engage staff um, to to have those meaningful conversations and prioritizing the budget and spending is what we are looking at. Had to do one priority over the other. Um, and the the thing about the financial oversight committee that I reiterate, I see the value in engaging staff. Um, you heard from two of our excellent principals who live this and breathe this every day, who spoke to you this evening. Tremendous value in what they bring. Um, oversight comes with a need to have a um, no personal stakes associated. I think Connie and Matt were so brave to come and and share their challenges and their recommendations. But sometimes sharing opinions in a room that that needs oversight, it needs true oversight. Um, there's not safety in the room and when personal stakes are in the picture, it can change opinions in terms of recommendations that may come to the board. Um, right, like bringing an employee uh, some details about, hey, we've got some year-end cash savings. Where should we transfer them? The conversation may become about like, well, why didn't you pay me more? And that's not really the priority of the group. Um, there are other opportunities for those conversations. We want to have those other opportunities and so I will just reiterate, we've got thoughts around that parallel opportunity. Um, and so I don't think it needs to be a board vote. Um, we want to continue working in that direction and intend to, so. Um, and and just want to engage in future conversation about what that right engagement opportunity is.
So I think what I'm hearing from tonight in Nox's comment is there is support for a parallel opportunity to engage more staff members. Um, because one of the things I've heard multiple times this evening is we want to hear creative solutions to solve some of the the budgetary issues and uh, also in building management. And that probably comes best from the people that are living in the buildings day in and day out. And so I think having a parallel group where we can hear more staff member voices instead of just adding uh, maybe two people to the financial oversight committee might be a better option um, to hear these voices directly uh, and engage with them in a different way. So I think moving forward, the board would probably like uh, an update on what the district's plan is to engage staff on a better level.
We should have that way this week.
Okay. Very good.
I do want to point out, like, I do think um, um, I won't steal an example, but teachers are some of the most create, creative people I have ever met. And if if there is a a leak, they will figure out how to put a bucket under the leak and teach around the leak. If there is a AC that doesn't work, they'll move to the hallway. I want to be careful with the word like creative solutions because we already do these creative solutions because the facilities aren't adequate in too many of our buildings. So it's good to be creative. I think we want to stretch, I mean, we want to stretch ourselves and we don't want to just, you know, have our hand out for more taxes all the time. But there is a limitation. I mean, when um, the county faces the same things, I know. There's a limitation to the ability to to go after grants or to go after private donors or to go after whatever. Um, we've done a number of those things and we're working hard on those things, but um, there there's limitations to that and we have needs that are very, very big. So and I didn't mean to discount what you were saying by being creative, but we've heard it a lot from from all sorts of people that teachers will be creative, man. They'll, they they will be creative. Um, but is that really what we want our employees to do? Um, to duct tape the window so the snow doesn't come through? That's super creative, but is that fair to our employees? Not really, right? It's not, so.
And I think to to my end of the creative solutions and I think to other comments, I appreciate you bringing that up, but um, sometimes and a lot of times, the people that come up with the best solutions are the people that are in the buildings day in and day out, for this example. And the board members are not typically the ones in these buildings 40, 50 hours a week. And so we want to give an opportunity to hear from the people directly. Um, and I think it creates a more organic solution. Um, so I don't, I don't want the, I don't want staff members to come with ideas of duct taping the window shut. I don't want to hear that kind of creative solution, but uh, to your end that staff members are super creative. Um, I think there's probably untapped ideas out there that we haven't really heard because we haven't given that space for it. And so um, I think what we're trying to do is just create a framework where we can hear that, hear those suggestions, hear those comments and a lot of times make direct changes from that. And so um, so staff, hear me clearly. I don't want to hear duct tape windows solutions. I don't, I don't want, God bless you for being creative, but um, I think there's a higher level of problem solving that is housed within our district and and those are the kind of solutions that I think the board would like to hear. Okay, Julie?
I just have clarification questions.
Yep.
First of all, the only decision we have to make is whether or not we're going to exceed revenue neutral.
Um, so uh, there's no vote. Um, it doesn't require a board approval. My, unless there are concerns to be discussed at the board table about our intent to exceed, I will provide you with the final form before we send it out so you all are prepared for the mailers. Um, what I presented to tonight is there's the estimated mill rate that I want you um, to feel comfortable with as we approach August meeting. And then you've got the example of the form that will be sent out and I will send you the final, final version. Um, I just wanted to make sure, tonight's meeting is all about making sure that we're on the same page of we do intend to exceed the revenue neutral rate, so.
But but the the numbers that you had in the form are not necessarily firm.
They are not.
Okay. It's just that we intend to exceed.
Correct, correct.
Okay, so that's my first clarification. My second one is on this, on our form here, slide number 25. Um, where, you know, we get the final number of the 15 million, 15 and a half approximately additional taxes raised. You said all that does for us is just make up the difference.
Not a hundred percent, so the general fund, um, that we don't get equalization state aid in the general fund, right? But pretty much in every other fund, it, not a hundred percent, but most of those additional property taxes raised are going to offset the loss of state aid.
So when, a lot of times when we're looking at this number, we're thinking, oh, that's the additional revenue that we're going to have in order to give teacher raises or this, that and the other. But all that does for us this year is just offset what we're not going to get from the state.
That's right.
To piggyback on Julie's question, on slide number 24, we've got percentages of what the state aid decreases. Do we know what the numbers are, the dollar amount is?
Can you repeat that?
Uh, on slide number 24, we have percentages of the decrease. And so Julie's asking about there's a 15 million dollar increase. But what is the dollar value of the state aid decrease?
Yep.
So we can know what that difference is. Are you done? Okay. Melody?
So actually, I'm going to go back to the request that um, board member Nox Vaughn has made, and that is and ask from a legal perspective, is it the role of the board to make that decision to vote um, whether or not if we'd like to add an additional individual, if it's UTW president um, to the committee?
So this is a superintendent's advisory committee, not, not a Board of Education Advisory Committee. Um, so.
Well, what what I'm hearing is he works for the school board. So is there? So is, is there any reason from a legal perspective um, to ferret that out? I, I'd like to know. I'd just like to know who's, I understand that it's the superintendent's board.
There's, there's no legal.
Or committee.
I don't think there's any legal issue. Is that your question?
Isn't, no, not, that's, my question is, under whose authority is it, and decision, is it as for who's, who selects members to go on the board? I know we gave recommendations as board members. We didn't make the selection.
We could legally add.
So I, I'm hearing from another board member, we can add.
We could legally add, yes.
Okay, well, it sounds, it sounds like I've gotten my answer. Okay, so it sounds like that the board can make that decision.
Well, I have a question and piggyback on you. What was the reason that they were not?
What was the reason that they were not invited in the first place? I mean, why are we here?
Why are what here?
Well, why are we at this point where there seems to be a conflict that they need to be present because, aren't they part of the district?
Well, so no, the makeup of the committee with the three meetings that we decided on at the beginning was that it would be community and parents.
Okay.
There, no staff members vote on this committee. The only voting members are community and parents. So that, was that the right way to do it? I don't know. You could, anybody could say, nope, that was a bad way to do it. But that's what we decided. We decided we're going to have three meetings in March, April.
Now they're going to have three more.
Right.
Right.
After tonight, we really needed tonight to kind of gauge direction and board desire of where we go from here. Because, I mean, they made a recommendation, Lindsay did a great job of explaining it. And now we're kind of at a point where we have a decision to make. Not necessarily tonight, that's why I think we need a workshop.
Right.
But I do think it'll be important to know, from you guys' perspective, what do you want, if we're going to have three more Financial Oversight Committee meetings? What do we want those to be about? Right? What's the intention of those meetings? What are the problems we're trying to solve?
So I guess I'm talking about something different. I was talking about what NOC brought up. About getting other people, the union, into this group because they are part of the district.
Yeah.
So, and my question was, why weren't they there in the beginning? And you told me. So what is stopping this board from saying, you know, they can, they need to have a presence there?
Sure. I mean, nothing.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
Yeah. I think that was maybe Melody's question, too.
And you did, you did. So, yeah, it was just clarification.
But I don't know that, I don't know that we would, I think adding staff members as voting members of this group changes the group. So if that's the will of the board, we could do that. But I think Connie was, Connie Reddick was on the team, but she wasn't a voting member.
Right. They don't have to be a voting member, but they need to have a presence and be there at the meetings.
Right.
To be in the circle, but perhaps not a voting member. I don't know.
Yeah. No, but to your point, the conversation that I heard when UTW president Katie Warren gave her report was that, I don't think it was about voting. It was about actually being able to have, to hear from individuals, as board president Diane Albert has mentioned also, the importance of having those voices at the table when these decisions are being made. So it wasn't about the vote, I don't think. I think it was more about the conversation and the voice that, the expertise that those individuals bring. So, so back to the point, if this, I will...
Sorry.
...place on the table for our president to, you know, to either, or if board member NOC Vaughn wants to call a vote, it sounds as though the board is potentially ready to make a decision here. But I'll leave it to you.
If I, I'd love to make a recommendation. I really feel like we have some, after we get feedback from tonight and we can collectively put our, all of our better heads together tomorrow, bring back a report to kind of that parallel opportunity where staff will have a better voice to participate in giving feedback on financial issues. The Financial Oversight Committee is very narrow and focused. They're going to get one issue per year to look at. Next year, it might be enrollment fees. I don't know how much excitement there is going to be on attending three committee meetings reviewing local enrollment fees. And there could be a lot, I don't know. It's a very narrow focus group. And I think what we want to honor is that experience, and we value educator opinions and feedback on our budget tremendously. And we want to give a more meaningful opportunity to engage staff on meaningful things that impact our budget versus the narrow focus of the Financial Oversight Committee. So...
And it's possible, we could do both. Right? That's possible that we could do what Addie just said and add teachers to this group. We haven't scheduled any more meetings for the Financial Oversight Committee, is that true?
That's true.
So I think once we get to that step, we can evaluate. This is from some of you guys, I mean, I, of course, appreciate the feedback, right? As always, if this is the will of what we want to do, I don't have any problem with it. I do truly believe, though, it needs to be something more than just that, even if we do that, right? If you want to take a vote, put somebody on the committee, that's, I don't have any problem with that. But it really needs to be more than that. I don't know if that would be sufficient. So, for me, for what I think we need, so.
And I think we're very much in agreement with that. Because again, my take is that, like, hey, this is just one small step, one small solution toward this broader process and goal of, you know, how do we more meaningfully engage staff, families, communities, and the decisions that we make as a district, so.
I appreciate the discussion. I think the will of the board without taking a vote necessarily is that we do hear more from staff. And I think the previous conversation of potentially having a parallel Financial Oversight Committee with staff members and then probably adding on some staff members onto the existing Financial Oversight Committee would probably be a working solution. And what I'm hearing from you, is that something that you guys are going to be discussing and looking into?
Yeah. So I would say the second part of what you said, yes. The other part, what, in my mind, if we were to poll twelve staff and create a committee, I still don't know that that would be adequate voice, in my opinion, for really what we need to do. Right? So in my mind, it's probably much broader and bigger than that. So I just don't want to commit to that, right? And say, well, Kelly said on July seventh, there was going to be a parallel group. And so when they vote, and they vote, and it's all the same topics, I'm not sure that's exactly what we need. It's probably not enough. So, if I'm okay with that.
Fair. Yes, that's fair. I guess, and we're getting off into the weeds on the discussion. So to continue off into the weeds just for a few more minutes, I think there are, you and I have talked about major changes to the building site committees. And so maybe that is an avenue to collect this information because that would be made up of staff members and community members and local businesses and everything to get a broader perspective. And maybe we can use that as a framework to hear sufficient staff voices for this. That's just an idea, putting that out there for you. But that is something that is a large change that's going to be happening this next current school year for previous school years.
Yep. Yeah. And I think the point, one of, I don't want to put words in Lindsay's mouth, but I do think this is bigger than just a yes, no bond vote. Right? This is bigger than that. And this is not a one-time thing. This is an ongoing conversation that needs to continue. And some of what we've needed to do is align our infrastructure to match this demand. Right? So we've added the parent engagement specialist that's working with Gil. We're going to reframe the community engagement position. This should be posted, if it hasn't been posted already sometime soon. Building site councils, right? It's not just about, we can't just show up once every twenty years with our handout and say, hey, go vote yes. It has to be something ongoing. And that's with staff as much as it is with Joe Blow, community member, and parents and community and business and everybody. So we've definitely learned that. And that's a bit why, I think I've told most of you guys on the board, in a weird way, even though it's a ton of work, it's a ton of work, the no vote might have been the best thing that happened to us as a district. Because it's really made us evaluate how we've operated in some of these spaces instead of just saying, you know, here's how we go after a bond vote, and you list to a consultant, and you do this. It's really, how do we really engage in a meaningful way? It's not just one time, it's ongoing. And we've done some good things with the building needs assessment, I think. I think that's been a good start. But I think there's so much more we could do with this. And we're trying to put some things in place to be able to move that direction for next school year. But we've really been building it this summer, I mean, in a lot of ways. So, yeah. I can offer an update this week, and then you guys can give me feedback on that. How does that sound? Is that...
Okay. I think that sounds good. So, next steps moving forward. Thank you. Getting back on to the topic, Stan?
I was just going to ask a clarifying question. Since NOC raised the question, it has set off kind of a workshop discussion. And so I need a clarification. Kelly, you mentioned our next workshop, and what is exactly that workshop going to be on?
Well, I think this slide, and looking at the decisions of, I guess, and I speak for Addie, I think, you know, general and capital funds, twenty and eight, we're good there. We're not going to budge those. But what do we, what is it, what are the implications to leaving the L O B where it's at? Buying it down or not buying it down? What are the implications to five point five for the bond and interest? And then what's the implications of the point five for special liability? And just answer those questions and walk through that.
Could we address guardrails about the Financial Oversight Committee? Because there's some, I kind of allude to it to my questions with Lindsay, there's still some clarifying questions that I want, if they're going to meet this fall, I'm just wondering if the work, next workshop, we can have this ongoing discussion in a informal setting where we talk about guardrails on what we're look, because we're at a big turning point in this district. And it's going to be the seven of us that make the decision on what direction we head. And I think we're going to have to include this in the workshop.
Yeah. I think that'd be...
And so when is that tentatively?
I think we need to do it before the next board meeting, for sure.
Okay.
Don't you?
NOC, if you're...
Before July sixteenth.
Okay.
Would you be willing, and I think Kathy expressed some concerns, or, well, we all have. So, I mean, is this something that we, your questions can be asked at the workshop?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Any further questions from the board? Okay, seeing none. Addie, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
We would like to follow up on the state aid payments, though, and we can have that discussion at the workshop. Thank you. Okay, Latona, next item?
Executive session attorney-client privilege.
I move that the board go into executive session for the consultation with the district's general counsel, which would be deemed a privilege in attorney-client relationship for fifteen minutes. The executive session will include all the board members present and the general counsel, Dan Lawrence. Motion made by Diane, seconded by Stan. Let's add in a five-minute break in there, Latona, for bathroom for the board. So nine oh five, so the board will return back in this room at nine twenty. And we'll resume the meeting then. Oh, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Latona. Okay, the board is back from executive session. Latona, next item?
Consent.
Agenda?
I said...
Okay. Motion made by Stan, seconded by Kathy. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes seven zero. And I will just remind the public that the board does review consent agenda items at a open public meeting the week prior to these board meetings during the summer months. Check online for the exact schedule, time, and location. But during the school year, they are typically the Friday prior to the board meeting. So these are reviewed and openly discussed by the board.
And are the minutes available for the public?
We do not keep minutes on this.
For our workshop?
Not for workshops, no. But they are open to the public every time that we meet.
Okay.
Okay. Latona, next item?
Discussion on call general contractor of various sites.
Okay. We'll call up Luke Newman. Welcome, Luke.
Good evening. Thank you. As per our new-ish process, when board members want to pull things out of consent, we put them on the regular agenda. So Luke is here to answer any questions. And then I think we want to call for a vote tonight, if possible, too, so.
Okay. Very good. Julie, did you have some questions?
Yes, I did. Well, and I guess, as much as anything, it's just a comment. We discussed in workshop that this contract had been used in a general contract format where a sub was included under the amount to do asbestos removal. And that the entire two hundred and fifty that we had approved had been utilized on the one project, and you were needing an additional hundred thousand. Correct?
Correct, yeah. We would have had enough money to do the whole project had we not rolled the asbestos abatement subcontract under, underneath.
Yeah. And my comment just was that when I would have voted for this, well, first of all, I'm supportive of the work here at AMAC to remodel the room for the board meeting room. And I'm also supportive of this general contractor. They're an excellent general contractor. But when I would have voted for the two hundred and fifty for the on-call contract, it wouldn't have been for this type of project with just one project and subwork under the direction of that one project. So, just because it's not in line with what I would have voted for, I won't be voting for the change order.
Sure, yeah. As you know, I agree with you. This isn't typically the kind of project we would use our on-call general contracting agreement with. Due to the urgency of the project, it was around April, we made the decision to move board meetings over here and do the remodel work. And we wanted to take advantage of the summer months because that's kind of our downtime with scheduled meetings in the space. And so kind of had to get things going as soon as possible. And at the time, the project was going to be a little smaller in scale. The table was going to be at the front side of the north wall, so we wouldn't have needed the same backdrop and everything that we're doing now. We reoriented the board table to more, I'm sorry, I'm repeating this, you've heard this.
No, that's good.
Just for public benefit.
Sure, absolutely.
I was going to ask you, Luke, can you just give us a brief overview, if people hadn't been at the agenda reviews, that way they can kind of understand what the conversation is happening?
Yeah. Essentially, you know, when we first initially planned the project, it was one that didn't seem like it needed a designer's input. It was simple enough. We were planning on moving the board table from North High over here. And as we got into planning for the project and we coordinated with the AV side of things, we found there was a little more electrical than we initially thought there was going to be. And the board table moving over wasn't really going to be conducive for the space. We're going to have to put it up on casters and have to move it around a lot for PD. And so ultimately decided to reorient the board table to where it's more in the corner. It's better for safety and security. It's going to improve accessibility. And it just improves the functionality of the space quite a bit to where it's going to, it'll work better, the orientation for both the board meeting space and PD use. And then in addition to that, there's the mezzanine space that we use, well, kind of use loosely as a meeting space currently, but my understanding is that it's not very usable because it's open to the space below. And so that was another change we also decided to implement was just framing up the walls up to the ceiling, taking out the stairs that were in there to where we actually have a true dedicated meeting space up there. So all the changes were all really good changes, made a lot of sense for a lot of reasons, but ultimately, unfortunately, brought the budget a little higher than we had the money available for.
And I just wanted to throw out a couple of the things. We, the budget, we would already budgeted for this. We have a budget for non-attendance centers that we allocate every year. So there was already budget for this. This didn't come from some other place. And Isabella was able to attend the meeting tonight in a wheelchair because we were here and that wouldn't have been possible at North High. She could have, she could have found a spot, but we don't really have anything that's ADA accessible in the way that we can here as we design it. And same with the technology. We were able to do some things with technology that will allow us to use this room four or five days a week instead of just every now and then like we do at North High. And I believe we can design, Terry's on this, but we can create some security measures here that don't exist at North High for you all, which will be, it's important also.
Yeah. And like I said, I'm supportive of the project. I just wish we could have designed it and bid it and approved the bid as opposed to the on-call contractor process. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Luke, for the background. Okay, thank you, Luke, for the background. Thank you, Kelly, for the information of why we are moving the boardroom from North High to AMAC. And so with that, this is an action item, and so we do need to call for a vote.
I think you've got more questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. I am so sorry, I have to switch screens. So Stan?
That's okay, I was actually heading in your direction. While I'm sympathetic to Julie's concerns about the use of on-call on this, I do think there were some unique situations that came up on this. And this whole process of either repairing North High or has been unusual from the very start. And now that we're at the finish line, I'd like to move that we adopt on-call general contractor various site diligent 8.1, just in order to help the conversation move forward. Diane?
Very good, motion made by Stan, seconded by Melody. And we do still have more questions. So Kathy?
Thank you. I just want to make sure I understand. So the on-call contract that we voted for last year was for something specific. So what we're doing now is we're borrowing from that fund, and are we going to be able to replace the money back into the on-call account?
So the on-call agreement is, it's a yearly renewal that we, so we bid it out every three years. And then we can renew it for, so we can renew it for three years. And then after that three-year period, then we rebid it. I think we have, we're coming up into our, this is our final year of renewal with the current contract. And the board just approved that last month for this next fiscal year. So it's not for any specific project, it's for urgent projects that arise. And we've been really good fiscal stewards of it throughout this whole year. We, to your point, Ms. Cedric, we really try to keep things, get things bid out, make sure there's a design and bid it out. And so we did a great job with that throughout the year. And because of that, we had enough funding available in that contract. We hadn't used any of it, so we were able to put it towards this project.
So as it says here, this is an urgent project, because it is?
Right, right.
Okay. I mean, I think the project is great, don't get me wrong. I think it's great. I just wanted to know about the monies. I mean, are we borrowing from Peter to pay Paul? Or is this just a no, we're just going to use it? We have a new one coming up, y'all voted on?
Right, right.
And this is just the way it's going to be?
So we had the 250 from last year, we're adding 100 on to it from last year, on top of last year's contract. And then we have another 250 that the board's already approved for this.
So we're voting on $100,000 extra tonight?
Right.
And, but it said not to exceed, so that's why we have to take this vote, right? And you're not going to come back for any more, are you?
No.
Okay. You're not going to come back for any more, are you?
No, ma'am.
Okay, seeing no further questions. We do have a motion on the table, it's seconded. And so let's go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes 6 to 1. Thank you, Luke. Latona, next item?
Action, Council of Great City Schools Board of Directors Representative.
So we have had Hazel Stabler serve as the representative for the Council of Great City Schools for the last few years. And it has her request to continue on with that. And so the motion, I'll make the motion that we appoint Hazel Stabler as the board representative to serve on the Council of Great City Schools. Motion made by Diane, seconded by Kathy. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes 7-0.
You've got to be quicker.
Latona, next item?
Policy 1231 Artificial Intelligence.
We have seen this on the last, I think, three meetings. Rob has spoken to this. Are there any questions regarding the AI policy? Stan?
Just to help along the conversation, I move that we adopt the policy.
Motion made by Stan, seconded by Melody.
Not quite, no.
Well, Melody's just right in my ear, so I'll listen a little closer for you next time, Noc. All in, motion made by Stan, seconded by Melody. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes 7-0. Latona, next item?
Policy 3460 Unrestricted Reserves.
This is another policy that we have seen a number of times. Are there any? Motion made by Kathy?
I'll second.
Seconded by Noc. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes 7-0. Latona, next item?
Superintendent's Report.
All right, Kelly?
All right. I alluded to some things earlier tonight, but I guess I'll reiterate. But start with a little bit of a reflection. We don't, we're pretty busy most of the school year as a family. We don't watch a whole lot of TV. And just recently, we've had some downtime and able to watch, there's a pretty cool thing on Netflix, I think, about the Challenger mission and all of that, which my kids knew nothing about, but I distinctly remember being at McKinley Elementary in Abilene as a second grader on the playground when we found out about the tragedy. But it stood out, and I thought this, but I didn't say it, my wife actually said it to me. If you haven't watched it, it really stood out that the person that the society decided to send to space was a teacher, right? Not some rich person, not Katy Perry, right? A teacher. And President Reagan and Vice President Bush. And they talk about how it's like the coolest thing that you could do is send a teacher to space, because that person was of the highest, most utmost kind of respect in the country at the point. Super sad what happened, but it did, it was telling to me just how different it is today and how hard it is for our teachers. And I don't think that some of the volatility, I think is probably the best way to put it, some of the volatility that happens with all the things that Addie was talking about with funding and finances and everything that goes on, makes it even harder and harder to be a teacher. So I wanted to comment just a little bit on the federal funds situation that has just come up in the last week. We are going to, again, talk, we've got a busy day tomorrow. We're going to talk tomorrow more about what this means for us. We're going to plan some parent, some parent communication, because I know people are talking about a staff note about staffing and some of that, those sorts of things. But I think it's worth saying that we do a good job of being like the shock absorbers for the district, right? Especially our finance department. That as we hit bumps and potholes, we try to keep the whole thing pretty stable. But we can't drive the thing off a cliff and expect to survive. And so while we don't want to be reactive, we need to understand that 2025, 2026, and 2027, we face big, big potholes, big, big potholes. And so some of that's locally with the bond issue and what we do with that. Some of that's at the level of Topeka and a school finance formula that is, the current conversations, I feel like, are somewhat concerning. And then the federal level, and not having really any idea what's going to happen with some of those, you know, 70% of our budget. So I say all that not to scare, but to prep us for being ready to respond and respond quickly as a district. We have a voice, we have advocates. We have, I think, six senators and 20 representatives in Topeka that cover our district. And those people need to hear us and hear how important Christina's presentation tonight, right? That is vitally important. If we want kids to read, and we know it takes six years for anybody to move to a country to become fluent in that language, we can't act as though holding us accountable for test scores and dangling the carrot of money over our heads is going to motivate kids that don't speak English to do better on a test, right? And so I just, I want us to be ready. I want us to just think about what these next couple of years will, could look like. And again, it's volatile, it changes. But we need to be ready for significant impact on all of these things that are up in the air. And be willing and ready to advocate as we need to. So our teachers deserve it, our kids deserve it. Every one of our kids needs a highly qualified teacher in their room. And we've got to support them as much as we can to make that happen. So I'm not too Pollyanna to think we'll go back to 1985, when I was a second grader, and think that teachers are the be-all, end-all, like a lot of people did back then. But I think we can move more in that direction. And part of it is truthfully, that rebuilding of trust that we've been talking about tonight, too, right? I think Lindsay's comments were on point for a lot of the things we've heard and how important it is to do that. But part of trust is truth. When people know the truth, that matters. And so they hear things that are not true, and they believe them, and that erodes trust. And so making sure we are speaking from the truth and we are addressing things that aren't true is also a big piece of it, too. So always a chance to do better. But I think that that's what's on my heart tonight and now. And hopefully, this federal fund situation gets figured out quickly, and we can move forward. That's kind of been the progress, you know, we hit the pothole, we swerve a little bit, and then we get back on track. Because we've got a lot of important things to do. We need to teach kids to read, teach kids how to do math, and get them ready for the future. So I think that's it, thank you.
Very good, thank you, Kelly. Latona, next item?
New business and Board of Education requests.
Okay, I do have new business for the board to bring up. As many of you know, there was a joint town hall between the county, the city, and the school district. That was held last month, and I think you guys have all received a report on the feedback from that. And that was assembled by the Kansas Leadership Center. Four times a year, the county and the city get together for meetings called ONBAC. And they have a meeting scheduled for July 29 at 9:00 a.m. And they have extended an invitation to the Board of Education to be present there to discuss what was said and revealed at the town hall and to discuss potential shared services and to also discuss the framework for the town halls moving forward, date, time, locations, topics, different things like that. And so they have requested our presence. I think it's the first time ever that all of the three governing bodies with all the representatives are together in a room. So I think it's a pivotal and important moment for the electeds to get together and have a conversation. This will be held at the Kansas Leadership Center, and they are going to facilitate the discussion amongst us. It will be an open and public meeting, so the public is welcome to attend. But the purpose of the meeting is for the electeds to have a discussion. And like I said, it'll be facilitated by the Kansas Leadership Center. So I think this is a very important time for electeds to get together, to talk. And then also to create that time, space, and framework for us to all hear from our constituents, from people across the Wichita area, and to come up with some creative solutions, not duct taping windows. But true, real solutions, because we have complex problems and issues that are very serious. And this is to address some of that. And so again, that is July 29 at 9:00 a.m. at the Kansas Leadership Center. And we'll get a calendar invite sent out to the board members for that.
I was going to say, can we add it to the board activity calendar, too?
I'll get Latona the correct information, and she'll get that in our calendars probably tomorrow. She's usually pretty on top of it. So that is all I have for new business. Anybody else? Julie?
Yeah, excuse me. I have a, I have a Board of Education request. I would just like information on classroom sizes at district high schools to determine if the class sizes are equitable and appropriate for students and teachers throughout the district, or if modifications are needed.
Okay, very good, thank you, Julie. Noc?
Oh, does this go to Latona?
Either way.
Is this where, when we make board motions, or?
No, you can ask questions and, yeah, make requests.
Oh, so no board motions?
No. What's on your mind, though?
Oh, it's just the financial oversight committee, all that jazz. But I mean, we're going to talk about it at the workshop, so.
Yeah, I think what we're, I think Kelly's got a general direction. And it sounds like he'll give us an update soon on that and probably expanding more information at the workshop that will get scheduled.
I'll be watching.
Okay.
I might suggest, I haven't checked with you yet, next Monday, the 14th, if we could do the workshop, because Addie requested prior to the 16th. No, okay. Well, we can do it offline then, we don't need to do it right now. It feels, feels pressing-ish.
It's a little rushed.
It is a little rushed, I know, but.
For a bunch of volunteers to get together that.
We'll try to get something next week. Okay, so Latona will reach out.
Okay, yeah, Latona does a good job of kind of giving us two or three options, and then we can find something that works for the whole board.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday's best for me.
And I think the sooner we do this, the easier admin's going to feel and our superintendent is going to feel. We're here to support the county, so, yeah.
Appreciate it.
Okay, seeing no further requests. Latona, next item?
Adjournment.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Okay, motion made by Melody, seconded by Kathy. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes 7-0, we are adjourned.